Matters to go through, so we're going to start with that. I won't get to anything controversial with the line, so we'll check that in a second. A clerk will help us with that. So unless there's objection, I'm going to invite the non-voters into the hall if there are any. Okay. So before we get started, under the mask, code of mask regulations, please take note of the locations of the duly marked emergency exits in the front and back. Also, as announced, masks are encouraged but not required. In the rear of the house and my right is for those who insist on wearing masks. Now, will those who are willing and able please stand for the pledge of allegiance? And for that, I'd like to invite Ms. Anna Mara, the Ipswich High School, class of 2023, to lead us. There she is, come on up here. There's a flag, "House left." There you go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much. So before I call the meeting to order, I'd like to recognize a few volunteers up here who, after having served us many years, are leaving us. Two people from the school committee and one from the finance committee. Greg Stevens from the chair of the school committee, if you would, please. Oh, I don't think that's hot.
Can you all speak right into the microphone as possible to hear back?
Is it? Okay. How about that? Alan Fay, Alan Fay to the information booth, that's Woodstock.
Okay, I'll try it again. Greg Stevens, school committee. As Tom mentioned, we have two longtime members of our committee leaving us after this meeting. I'd like to just share a few words about them and thank them for their time on the committee. I'll start with Chubb Whitten. Chubb's been on the committee for seven years with us. He has spent time as a chair, multiple terms as vice chair, and, you know, Chubb's commitment to the children of Ipswich has never been in question. He's always put the kids first, not only within the four walls of our committee meetings, but also in all the work he does outside of committee meetings in the schools. He's a constant presence at the elementary schools. He led the Winthrop Playground build back in 2013, I think it was. I've seen him shoveling the sidewalks in front of Winthrop School. So he's really, you know, totally committed and has been fully committed for the last seven years to the kids in this district, and I would just really like to thank him for his time. He's been a real doer for the committee over the last seven years, and he certainly had a big impact, so maybe give Chubb a round of applause. The next is Hugh O'Flynn, and I'm sure many of you know how many hours we all put into school committee meetings, from our individual, you know, our bimonthly meetings on Thursdays to various subcommittee meetings and calls. Hugh's been on the committee for nineteen years, so I'm not even sure how we could ever calculate how many hours he was spent on school committee-related issues. You know, Hugh has just been an invaluable resource to all of us on the committee. His institutional knowledge with everything related to school committee and the schools will just, it'll be a real, real, real big loss for us. Newer members of the committee to not have him around, especially budget-related issues, he's just been such a wealth of knowledge all these years. And as I mentioned with Chubb, Hugh's commitment to the schools goes far beyond just the school committee meetings. He would spend countless hours on the sidelines of the various high school sports teams acting as the doctor in residence supporting our athletic programs, and I'm sure he'll still continue to do that. So, again, he will be a huge loss not having him on the committee, and I'd just like to thank him for all the great work he's done for us over the years.
Thank you very much, Greg. And now I'd like to recognize the chair of the finance committee to honor one of the retirees.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Welcome, everyone, for coming. Good to see you all here tonight, back in the high school. So we also actually have two vacancies here on the finance committee, and I'd like to recognize each of them individually. Tonight's a real bittersweet night because, you know, we, as a committee, have a lot of meetings together, we have a lot of time together, you know, we share our personal lives, we share our professional lives, we go back and forth as a committee, and we really get to know one another. So it's always a bittersweet moment when a committee member leaves. And tonight, we have Chris Doucette, who has been on the finance committee for just about five years now, half a decade. Born and raised Ipswich, has decided to come back to town to raise a family, and he spent half of a decade donating his time to serve the people of Ipswich and the community of Ipswich to do the due diligence that's necessary as a member of the finance committee. So it's bittersweet to see you go, Chris. We certainly will miss you. We hope that you stick around for town meetings and stay involved in some capacity or another, which we know you will. And I'd like everyone to join me in a round of applause for Chris. The second member that will be departing the finance committee has been serving for a little longer period of time, and I'm sure a lot of you know her well, Janice Clements-Skelton. Again, another born and raised Ipswich resident, went through the school systems, raised a family here, put them through the school systems, and has spent countless, countless numbers of hours and nights in the same capacity. Janice has spent a little more than fifteen years as a member of the school committee. And I will say that, you know, another tough part about, I'm sorry, finance committee, not the school committee, and I will say that, you know, another tough part about losing a member is that not only do you lose a friend, but you also lose a significant level of institutional knowledge and dedication that you can't just foster overnight. These folks have, you know, from the town, have spent multiple years viewing these budgets, seeing multiple budget cycles, and that's something that takes time and it takes patience. You know, we, as a committee, spend hundreds and hundreds of hours going to committee meetings. We spend hundreds and hundreds of hours putting together agendas, putting together the finance committee report, which you have in front of you tonight, and all of that is on pure volunteer time. And we do it because we have a passion for the town, and Janice and Chris are, you know, role models in that, in that capacity when, you know, just showing their level of dedication. So I'd like to thank both Chris's family and Janice's family, but I'd also like you guys to join me in another round of applause to thank Janice Clements-Skelton for her amount of time. You both will be missed. Thank you. Now, I will like to just say one more thing. Unlike the school committee and the select board, the finance committee is an appointed position. Three positions are appointed by the body of annual town meeting, three positions are appointed by the town moderator, and three positions are appointed by the select board. So when a seat is open early, which in this case, Janice's seat is one year left and Chris's seat is two years left, the finance committee has the ability to temporarily fill that seat until the next town meeting, or the next time that the appointing authority has the ability to do that, which is usually around the town meeting time. So with that being said, the finance committee is seeking volunteers who are willing to join our committee. You do not need to have a finance background, you do not need to work in a profession that involves finance. You really just need to have the time, energy, and dedication to be willing to come to meetings, give an opinion, come up here and say a few words every now and again, and just donate your time. If you are interested, at our June meeting, which is June 14th, we will be having interviews for those who are interested, and then ultimately making our decision in July on which members will be filling those two seats. So for those who are interested, feel free to reach out to the town manager's office, feel free to reach out to the finance committee directly, our contact information is on the town website, and I look forward to seeing possible applicants come forth. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michael. And finally, I'd like to recognize this, our representative from the upper chamber of the state legislature, Senator Bruce Tar, with some certificates for the retirees.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and through you to the members of town meeting. It's a real pleasure to be here with all of you tonight and to thank everyone for coming out to make important decisions about the town and its future. And it's also a good time to reflect on just how lucky we are to have the people that are in the front of this room who serve as volunteers, along with the many professionals in Ipswich Town Government, to be able to make things happen from day to day and from year to year, and to recognize the amount of sacrifice that they make, time away from family, time away from home, to be able to contribute their very best of insight and wisdom and diligence and foresight to be able to make things happen in the way that we would all hope they would in the community. And tonight, as everyone gathers to make very important decisions about the community, it's important to remember that we would not be able to do that without these folks that are in the front of the room, a few of whom we're going to recognize right now. And, Mr. Moderator, you were correct, I am here representing the upper chamber, but I'm very fortunate to have Ian from Representative Belcedo's office with me as well, so I'm pleased to tell you that this is a bicameral effort, and both chambers are recognized. Unfortunately, Representative Belcedo could not be here with us tonight, but very much wanted to extend her best wishes and congratulations as well, and hence sent Ian to join us in this presentation. I do want to first say thank you to Chris. Chris, it was late-breaking news to us that you were not going to be continuing on the finance committee, and so we are going to have a post-dated citation for you. I'm sure you can appreciate that, but we will get it done as quickly as we can, but that does not mean that we do not appreciate the good work that you have given to the finance committee and all of the time that you have put into it and the, again, the wisdom and the expertise that you have brought to the issues at hand in terms of balancing budgets, making sure that resources are available for all of the things that are priorities for the community, and making sure that you give your very best judgment on behalf of all of us. And so for right now, a round of applause will have to suffice, but we're happy to do that and give you another one. And Janice, we do have a citation for you, and it would be hard to fully express all of the attributes that you have brought to this board and all of the leadership that you have given to this community over the years, but we did want to bring citations. I have one from the Senate, and Ian has one from the House, and just a minute I'm going to ask you to, oh, come on up anyway, I can see, if you're like me, you're always eager to get to the microphone, so. But over the years, over the years, we've been very fortunate to watch your approach. You're very level-headed and well-reasoned, thinking about the budget and budgetary issues, including things that are not often without controversy, but you have always given it your very best, and you have always presented leadership that's based on your heart and your brain, and that's something that's very important to this community, and it's been an outstanding resource to this finance committee, and I think everyone would agree with that. So I do have a citation for you, and these come at great expense, they're printed by the state government, no, just kidding. But the citation reads from the Massachusetts State Senate, "Be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Janice Clements-Skelton in recognition of your fifteen years of dedicated and committed service to the people of Ipswich as a member of the town finance committee, and be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success and that this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to and a copy thereof transmitted by the clerk of the Senate." And this is signed by our Senate President, Karen Spilka, it's attested to by our clerk, Michael Hurley, and I am proud to offer it on May 10th of 2022 to someone who really exemplifies the best in volunteerism and service to the town. So Janice, congratulations and thank you. Okay, Janice, don't go away. Ian?
Thank you, Senator. On behalf of Representative Jamie Zalway-Belcedo and the House of Representatives, be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Janice Clements-Skelton in recognition of your fifteen years of dedicated volunteer service to the town of Ipswich on the finance committee. Your financial guidance and leadership in support of the town of Ipswich were invaluable to Ipswich's growth and success. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors, given this 10th day of May 2022 at the State House, Boston, Massachusetts, signed by Speaker of the House, Ronald Mariano, and by State Representative Jamie Zalway-Belcedo.
Mr. Moderator, as you know, our next two citations are for members of the school committee, and we are on the finance committee side of the room. If you would like us to remain here, we will do that. What's your pleasure?
You're welcome to stay right where you are.
Thank you. Whenever someone tells me I'm welcome to stay at the microphone, I never ask a second question. So, Mr. Moderator, we similarly are very pleased to recognize some members of the school committee who have really gone the distance for students in this town. We know that this is a community that values education, and we can look all around us and see the examples of that, and those things don't happen without leadership and commitment and oftentimes difficult decisions, but ones that must be made, and ones that must be made by people who care about the community and who care about kids. And they have to balance many, many interests to make sure that those interests are advanced, and we have two such individuals tonight. One is Hugh O'Flynn, who has been on the committee, I believe, for nineteen years, which is an amazing amount of time, but I think we've all come to see his dedication and commitment over almost two decades of service on the school committee, the attention that he pays to detail, the passion that he has for the subject, and the concern that he has for making sure that as we educate the next generations, we do so properly and with responsibility and accountability. So Hugh, I definitely want to express our gratitude and our thanks, and if I could ask you to make the trek over to the finance committee side of the hall, we'd just be pleased to present you with a citation. And so, this reads, "Be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Hugh O'Flynn of the Ipswich School Committee in recognition of your nineteen years of dedicated and committed service to the Ipswich School Committee and the town of Ipswich, and be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success, that this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to and a copy thereof transmitted by our clerk." This is signed by Senate President Karen Spilka, attested to by our clerk, Michael Hurley, and I am so proud to offer it on May 10th of 2022 to, again, an exemplary member of the Ipswich School Committee for so many years. Thank you.
And from the House of Representatives, be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Hugh O'Flynn in recognition of your nineteen years of dedicated service on the Ipswich School Committee. Your steadfast advocacy for the needs of the Ipswich Public School System, its students and parents serves as an inspiration for our entire community. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors, given this 10th day of May 2022 by, signed by Speaker of the House, Ronald Mariano, and State Representative Jamie Zalway-Belcedo. Thank you for your service.
And last but not least, if I could ask Chubb Whitten to join us over here? Chubb, we also want to thank you for seven years of service on the Ipswich School Committee, and one of the things that I've always noted about your service on the school committee is the analytical way that you look at things, to make sure that every side of a subject gets considered and that it gets done in a comprehensive, appropriate way, and in a way that's the best for the town and for the kids. And I know that we all appreciate that very much, and again, we appreciate seven years of service, again, time away from other things in your life, so that we could have the kind of school system that this community has. So thank you so much for that. And so this reads, "Be it known that the Massachusetts Senate," you kind of used to this now, "hereby extends its congratulations to Charles Chubb Whitten, the Ipswich School Committee, in recognition of your seven years of dedicated and committed service to the Ipswich School Committee and the town of Ipswich, and be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success, that this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to and a copy thereof transmitted by our clerk, signed by Karen Spilka, our Senate President, attested to by Michael Hurley, and I am proud to offer it on May 10th." to offer it on May 10th of 2022. Chubb, thank you for your service. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you. Don't go away.
On behalf of the House of Representatives, be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Chubb Witten in recognition of your seven years of dedicated service on the Ipswich School Committee. Your balanced and pragmatic leadership in support of the Ipswich Public School System, its students and parents serves as an inspiration for our entire community. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for good fortune and continued success in all endeavors, given this 10th day of May 2022, signed by Speaker of the House Ronald Mariano and by State Representative Jamie Zalway Belcito. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all. Mr. Moderator, we thank you for the opportunity to celebrate and commend these outstanding volunteers on behalf of the town, and I would just make note that, as you alluded to, the upper house, there are many things that we read about every day that divide us, from partisan issues to the different chambers, to the different levels of government. But when it comes to celebrating and recognizing outstanding volunteers like these, we are absolutely united, whether it be the House, whether it be the Senate, whether it be Republicans, whether it be Democrats, and that is something that is very special, and we hold it very special. And that's why you saw tonight, complete unanimity on the part of the House and the Senate to recognize some great folks.
Far bipartisan, no less.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Always a pleasure to hear from you. Let me just add that, as someone alluded to, municipal government in the Commonwealth is heavily reliant on volunteer labor like this, and so we encourage all of you, every spring, there are appointing opportunities and elections, so come on in, the water's fine. Okay, a quorum being present, the meeting will come to order, and welcome to the May 2022 Annual Town Meeting for the Town of Ipswich. We're meeting pursuant to the warrant, and the constable, served by the constable, and the clerk has entered it in the record. We have 19 articles tonight, and we should finish tonight, but if not, we'll finish tomorrow at 7:00. A few words about the process. We vote on motions, not articles. The first motion's called the main motion. And as in the past, I will read the main motion and then ask for a second, and then we'll go to the presentations. I'll then call for endorsements from the Finance Committee and perhaps others, and on that, there's a rule about dissenting votes from town officials. And I'll admit I've been lax in the past in not enforcing this rule, but I've discussed this with other moderators and municipal lawyers, and it's a common rule in other towns, and I think it's the way to go. So unless there's an officially sanctioned board or committee dissent, I'll ask the official with a minority view to speak from the members' microphone in the audience, rather than the microphone used by town officials up here. Conversely, the School Committee and Planning Board sitting in the front row will use the official microphones. This rule promotes unanimity, unity among town boards and committees, and unity is something we need in this town. This rule seems to me to be the best interest of the town, but tonight on the override, I see the Finance Committee is three to five, so I'll recognize that as a minority position. After the board and committee endorsements, we'll go to debate, and that's three minutes per person. A word about debate. A quick recap of the rules. Anyone wishing to speak must state the name and address, their pro and con, so if you're in favor of something, use that microphone. If you're opposed, on that one. If you have a question, please present the question to the moderator here, and if need be, I'll ask someone from the town officials for an answer. So please do not offer any comments of a personal nature to anyone. Disorderly behavior is grounds for removal, and because I think otherwise would be unfair, I will not recognize anyone more than once on an article until everyone who has liked to speak has spoken. Please, no applause, no booing, no cat calls. It's disrespectful, not to the other side, but it's just beneath the decorum of legislative body, and that's what we are, a municipal legislature. So those who would like to make a motion can do so in writing and give it to me. A word about moving the question. One must be recognized by the moderator to move the question. In our last meeting in October, someone didn't quite understand, and I didn't really explain it well, but if I think it's premature, I may not act on it, and if someone makes it, I may take it out of order. So that brings me to one thing, and that is the quantum of vote, which is whether it's a simple majority or a two-thirds vote. The quantum of vote for procedural matters, amendments, reconsideration, the like, can be set by the town or sometimes at discretion of the moderator. But the quantum of vote for the main motion is usually set by law. So for example, Article 15 tonight is to change the use of some property. By state law, that requires a two-thirds vote. Money coming out of a stabilization fund, that requires a two-thirds vote. Borrowing, borrowing a dollar is a two-thirds vote. And unfortunately, this year's Finance Committee report had a couple errors, and I wanted to list them now. Typographical errors, these things happen, and so just give me a moment to explain. On Article 3, the municipal budget is a simple majority, not two-thirds, and it could well have been that an earlier draft of that had taking money out of stabilization fund, and that's why it was labeled two-thirds, and it just was a typo. Under Article 11, the residency requirement, that's a simple majority, not a two-thirds. That's a home rule petition. There are ways to do that, that that is two-thirds, but that's not the way they're doing it tonight. And lastly, the override, that is a simple majority, not a two-thirds vote. If the School Committee were going to borrow money, it would be two-thirds, but it's just to raise an appropriate raise, meaning through taxes, and appropriate meaning, put it in this bucket. So, of course, it's conditional on passage at the ballot next week by a simple majority. So with that, we will go to Article 1. The consent calendar. Article 1. Hello, hello, testing 123, is that live? Yeah. Tammy Jones of the Select Board moves to set the salaries of elected officials, transfer funds from the electric light department, hear reports from committees and continue listed committees as standing committees of town meeting, amend Section 1529 of the general bylaws, and establish expenditure limitations of revolving funds to appropriate the sum of $437,089 under Chapter 90, and to authorize the Select Board to borrow in anticipation of state aid for such projects, all as set forth in Article 1 of the warrant for this town meeting. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Dougherty. Ms. Al.
It's our standard motion. Select Board supports this unanimously.
Okay. Finance Committee's recommendation?
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends this article. Again, it's housekeeping, and this is our way to make sure that we tidy the books at the beginning of each fiscal year.
Okay, so there are a number of revolving funds here, and typically, the way you do consent calendars is I'll just call them out. If anybody wants to question anyone, just say "hold," then we'll circle back to that after voting on everything else. Okay, so Town Warf Revolving Fund, $12,000. Beautification Fund, $5,000. Public Health Fund, $5,000. Sanitary Housing Fund, $7,000. Food Inspection Services Fund, $25,000. Council on Aging Fund, $100,000. Historical Commission Fund, $5,000. Town Hall Custodial Services Fund, $20,000. Shellfish Enhancement Fund, $15,000. Electric Vehicle Charging Fund, $1,000. Health Reimbursement Fund, $85,000. Cream Beach Maintenance Fund, $50,000. And Paving and Sidewalk Repair Fund, $40,000. Okay, so this is a simple majority. Let's, let's do this by the clickers, okay? But before we go to that, let's test the clickers, okay? So everyone has a clicker, and on the top one is green, and the second button is red. So the green is yes, and the red is no. So all those who think that the Celtics are going to win tonight, please indicate your vote, yes or no.
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night. Well, they're not going to win tonight. All right, tomorrow night. Okay, there are 342 voters. 382 voters. Okay, 10 seconds left to vote. And the vote is 341 yes, 62 no, so the Celtics are going to win tomorrow night. Okay, here we go. Let's have a round of applause for the Celtics. Okay, so now we'll go back to Article 1. It's a simple majority. All those in favor, please press green, and those opposed, press red. And we'll have closing votes in 10 seconds. Okay, I declare that passes by a two-thirds vote, 322 to 13. Now, in Article 1, we were going to hear from some committees, and first, I'd like to recognize, well, two committees, the Public Safety Building Committee and the Public Safety Property Reuse Committee. So first, let's hear from Mr. Weatherall for the Public Safety Building Committee. Just a quick update from the official's microphone, if you would please, just tell us where we are, please, on the Public Safety Building Committee.
A couple months ago, we hired a project manager for the project, and that company is known as CHA, but our guy to work with us in the design development and construction, his name is Joe Sullivan, and he comes with a supporting crew to help him. Last week, we interviewed three architectural firms, candidates for the project. We're going to continue the discussion about their qualifications on this Thursday evening in Town Hall, and I think it's the, I think it's the town manager's meeting room. And we will have another meeting a couple weeks after that to continue that discussion towards choosing an architect by the end of May. Then we'll start the design development during the rest of the year towards a construction project that will happen in 2023. Those are the two main, the two main pieces of progress since you last saw us at the town meeting where we voted to fund this project. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Next, Mr. Harris, Chair of the Public Safety Property Reuse Committee.
So I'm Chair of the Public Safety Property Reuse Working Group. They asked me to read this statement to explain what we've been doing and where we're going forward. The Public Safety Property Reuse Working Group was established by the Select Board to provide community leaders and Ipswich residents with a variety of potential uses for the existing police station building and the parcel located at 15 Elm Street, and the fire station building and a parcel located at 55 Central Street, following, of course, the construction of the new combined public safety building. The working group, which I am the chair of, consists of a dozen individuals representing town departments in public interest, including the Select Board, the School Committee, Finance Committee, Planning Board, Historical Commission, which is my appointment, the Garden Club Affordable Housing Partnership, local businesses, and citizens at large. And I want to particularly thank Linda Alexson from the Select Board, who really does a lot of work and has helped us get this together. She acts as our secretary and has made all the appointments. Without her, my job would be a lot harder. Our objective in this is to develop the best potential uses for the existing police and fire station buildings and/or parcels to be presented to the Select Board prior to the 2022 Fall Special Town Meeting. So we only have a few months here to come up with our proposals. We've met four times in the past three months, and we've completed the site visits to the existing police and fire department buildings. We started off creating a procedural framework for moving forward. We familiarized ourselves with the histories of the two properties. We've researched the reuses and sales of previous town properties, the towns, buildings that the town has, youth schools, in particular, older schools. And we're developing right now a public questionnaire that we plan to circulate quite shortly. So we are, we are moving on towards public participation in this project. We've, we've determined that the following criteria should be used in developing recommendations, first is feasibility, and then desirability, and of course, financial and community benefit. So going forward, the working group seeks input from the community and from representatives of community services, as well as local businesses, and of course, from the town itself. And I would encourage you to attend our meetings so that we can hear from you, starting out first, you can always come as a, for citizens' queries, but I do hope that very soon, going forward, we, we will begin entertaining specific ideas and proposals from interested parties. The most important thing for us right now is to hear from the public. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Michael, she's not here. All right, this is not in the program, but you have to learn to learn on the fly. There's an event coming up in Raleigh, in I think, May 20th, in support of the Ukrainian effort, and Tanya Marshall is here to ask, to give, she's Ukrainian, to announce it, but Mr. Dougherty's going to fill in for her.
Yeah, so Tanya Marshall, who is a local Ipswich resident and a Ukraine native, is hosting a Stand With Ukraine rally in Ipswich. It will be on Sunday, May 22nd, at 10:00 a.m., and the meeting spot will be at the Ascension Church.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, so we'll go to Article 2. Article 2 is a standard article to choose a member of the Finance Committee. We used to do it by motion, instead, we're doing it by nomination. So the floor is now open for anyone to nominate anyone, and you're welcome to self-nominate yourself or nominate someone else. Mr. Engel, wherever.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. You answered a question which I had as I approached the question mic, which is, where do you want me to stand?
There you go.
So I, my name is Jim Engel. I'm from 362 Linebrook Road, and I rise to place in nomination the name of Walter Hartford. Walter is currently serving on the Finance Committee. He's completing his seventh year on the Finance Committee, and those of us who are close observers of town government recognize the kind of qualities in Walter that we appreciate.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to nominate someone or nominate his or herself? Okay. Mr. Hartford, did you want to say anything, or if not, we can go to a vote. You're welcome to take a couple minutes.
Thanks, everybody. It's great to see this level of participation in town government. We don't often see that at the Finance Committee. I'm Walter Hartford. My wife and I have been here 17 years. About nine years in, we moved into the house that we're in now. We live at 3-Mahollan Drive. I'm not sure if I'm supposed to say that or not, but, and that, at that point, we realized we were in Ipswich for, for good. I mean, when we bought the house, that was the, my always question was, you know, how long are we going to live here? Is this, is this a good decision? My just, my answer was, as long as we're here forever, it's a good decision. When I joined the Finance Committee, Janice, among others, grilled me unmercifully, and when she asked me how I thought about Ipswich and how I thought about serving on the committee, I said I wanted to try to align our budget with our priorities, how we spend should reflect who we are. And I've tried to take that on as a member of the committee actively. I've been on the CDP Committee, and I've always tried to view Ipswich as a whole, not as how it affects my little part of the world. So, you know, that might be parking on Brookfield Ave, or, you know, something out on the neck or something different. I've always tried to view it through the lens of what's right. I've always tried to view it through the lens of what's right for Ipswich. So I welcome your support. I would love to, you know, spend another three years doing this, and I'm hopefully here for good. Thanks.
Okay, so we'll go to a vote. All those in favor of Mr. Hartford for another term on the Finance Committee, please press the first button, green, top button on your remote. And voting will close in ten seconds. And Ms., Mr. Hartford carries the day, four, three hundred and, three hundred and ninety-one to eight. Article Three is the municipal, twenty twenty-three municipal budget. Tammy Jones of the Select Board moves to appropriate the sum of twenty-nine, twenty-eight million, six hundred and ninety-nine thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars for the fiscal twenty-three municipal budget to be spent as follows. General Government, eight hundred and eighty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars. Finance, one million, seventy-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars. Planning, six hundred and fifty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars. Public Safety, five million, seven hundred and fifty-two thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars. Public Works, four million, nine hundred and eighty-six thousand, four hundred and four dollars. Community and Cultural Services, a million, six forty-eight, five seventy-seven. And Benefits and Other Miscellaneous, five million, nine twenty-four fifty-six. For a general fund total of twenty million, nine hundred and fourteen thousand, seventy dollars, including waterways, and Water Department, four million, eight hundred and fifty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars. Waterway Department, two million, seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars. And Sanitation, Solid Waste, Recycling, a hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars. And the total municipal budget of twenty-eight million, six ninety-nine, four forty-four. And that the following sums be raised and appropriated or transferred to the fund, the twenty-three budget. Septic Loan Program, thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars. Juris금 Count, two thousand dollars. Debt Premium, one thousand, forty-six dollars. Overlay Surplus, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Waterway Improvements, a hundred and seventeen thousand, six thirty-one. Raise and appropriate twenty million, four hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-six dollars. Water Receipts, four million, eight hundred and fifty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars. Waste Water Receipts, two million, seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars. Sanitation, Solid Waste, and Recycling, a hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars. For total funding sources of twenty-eight million, six hundred and ninety-nine, four hundred and forty-four American dollars. Is there a second? Second. Ms. Jones.
Our budget. I want to thank actually all the department heads for working very hard to make sure that our numbers all came in under the levy limit. As you can see, we're not asking for an override. We're telling you what the budget is. It has been very carefully gone over by all of our departments. The Select Board unanimously recommends and supports this budget.
Mr. Dougherty, the Finance Committee's endorsement?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee supports this year's budget in a vote of six in favor and one opposed. And just for clarity purposes, although we are a nine-member committee throughout this report, you'll see numbers that don't necessarily equal nine, and that's just because either a member wasn't present during our warrant hearing or left early, et cetera. But in this case, support, six to one. So just briefly, I'd like to just get some of the specifics out. So this is for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget, which will begin July first of this year and go until June thirtieth of the following year. It increases roughly by five hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which is just about under two percent, and has an overall impact of sixteen cents per one thousand dollars worth of value, assessed value, on your piece of property. The Finance Committee in general was supportive of the budget. There was some healthy discussion going back and forth on some of the pros and cons. One of the cons that ended up leading to a descending vote was about procedure, and there were other members of the Finance Committee that agreed about it. One of the things that we saw during the budget was salary, had to do with salary increases and certain salaries that went above double-digit percentage points. And what we were trying to establish as a Finance Committee was making sure that a precedent was set that any sort of, even justified or not justified, but any sort of large increases in salary, which labor is the largest portion of the town budget, any double-digit increases in salary be split and distributed over multiple-year periods so that way it slightly lessens the burden on the taxpayer. For this fiscal year, that recommendation was not adopted. So now the Finance Committee will work collaboratively with the Select Board to continue to try to not set certain precedents moving forward. But overall speaking, the budget that you see in front of you is a healthy budget. And just so everyone is aware, this budget is a result of hundreds of hours of work between the three, between the two committees, the Finance Committee and the Select Board, and then obviously with the school budget with the School Committee. Many evenings of vetting each department, going through each line item, asking the tough questions, making sure that the department heads and that the town is held accountable for the services that ultimately the town's people benefit from. Your services will remain the same, and quality of life will not go down. This budget is a good budget, and it is supported in favor, six to one. Thank you.
Okay, does anyone care to be heard? So we'll go to a vote. All those in favor, please press the green button, and those opposed, press the red button. And this is a two-thirds, I'm sorry, this is a simple majority vote. And we'll close the voting in ten seconds. Okay, I declare that passes by a two-thirds vote, three ninety-seven to twenty-four. Article Four is the school budget. Greg Stevens of the School Committee moves to transfer one hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the overlay surplus account, to transfer one million, eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars from the Education Stabilization Fund, and to raise and appropriate the sum of thirty-two million, nine hundred and one thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars for a total of thirty-four million, nine hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars to fund the fiscal twenty-three school budget set forth in Article Four of the warrant for this town meeting. And is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Dougherty. Please, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you. So the FY twenty-three budget that's put forward tonight is a product of a significant amount of work put in by our superintendent, our administrators, support staff throughout the district, our principals, and also a significant amount of work on behalf or on the part of the School Committee and the Finance Committee. The School Committee earlier this year took the time to meet with our principals and our central office staff to really get a sense from them what the needs are in our schools. At that point, we were presented a draft budget from the superintendent, which was presented to the full School Committee. Some revisions were made. We then spent three evenings with the Finance Committee really digging into the details of this budget. So this budget, as the town budget was, has really been vetted by, you know, many different interested parties throughout the town. One thing that really stands out in this budget, more so than any other year, our resources dedicated to meet the social, emotional needs of our students and really meet the learning loss that's popped up as a result of the pandemic. And that's not unique for Ipswich. It's happening everywhere. And it will likely impact future budgets as well. So it's something that our, our district has put a big priority on. You'll notice also that we are making a withdrawal from our stabilization fund this year in excess of one point eight million dollars. This stabilization fund was created through the override that passed in FY two thousand and fifteen, and at the time was projected to last the district five years. We're currently in year eight of the stabilization fund. So it's really, it's just been a real great tool to stabilize and smooth out our budgets over the years, and we, we ask you for your support today.
Thank you, Mr. Dougherty.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee unanimously supports this year's school budget. Couple of the numbers again. It is a almost thirty-five million dollar budget. It's actually larger than the municipal side of the budget. And it increases by about one point one million, which will add roughly thirty-two cents per thousand dollars of assessed value on your property. The Finance Committee enjoys the three nights, even though they are long, but we enjoy the three nights of the School Committee because we hear from the principals, we hear from the superintendent, and it's a really great opportunity to hear from the folks that have the boots on the ground in regards to what's happening in our schools with our children, which obviously is a precious resource to any community, let alone Ipswich. This budget has all the tools in it necessary to continue the level of learning that we've experienced, and this is critical now more than ever as we come out of a pandemic. The pandemic had real effect on the lives of children in the town of Ipswich, all through grades K through twelve. And the budget in front of you has all the resources needed to continue that level of learning and to fill those gaps that may arise from the pandemic. So thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anyone care to be heard on this?
Just saying the Select Board supports this budget, five to zero.
Okay. So we'll go to a vote. All those in favor, please press the green button, and those opposed, press the red button. And we'll keep the voting open for another ten seconds. Okay, I declare that passes by a two-thirds vote, three forty-six to thirty-three. Article Five is the Whittier Regional High School Budget. Greg Stevens of the School Committee moves to raise and appropriate the sum of five hundred and ninety thousand dollars to pay the town's share of the ensuing year's annual budget and debt service expense of the Whittier Regional Vocational Tech High School. Is there a second? Second from Pav. Mr. Stevens.
Okay, so Ipswich is a, a member district of Whittier, and we are responsible for paying the tuition and expenses for any students in Ipswich that choose to go to Whittier. So we are expecting approximately twenty-four students to attend Whittier this coming school year. The state actually sets the tuition rates for regional vocational schools, so that's, that's already set. And then there are some transportation costs mixed in there as well. So the per pupil cost, including, including transportation and capital assessments for Whittier, comes to nineteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars per student. We're using this five hundred and ninety thousand dollar number just to give us a little bit of cushion in case those numbers change, or I should say specifically the enrollment numbers change. If we don't need to use all of it, we certainly won't, but we just want to make sure we have enough to, to fund this requirement this fall.
Okay, and the Finance Committee's position?
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends this article. As Mr. Stevens pointed out, we typically do budget a little bit over what is anticipated in this particular article, and in the fall, we come back to and reallocate that money. We support this article and the next one coming up because we believe it's important for the town that we offer a well-rounded educational opportunity to learners of all styles. And so this isn't considered an outplacement in town. It's considered an extension of our educational program.
Okay, and the school, the finance, the, excuse me, the Select Board's position?
The Select Board unanimously supports this and supports Ipswich Schools, working with Whittier Tech. It unanimously supports.
Anyone care to be heard? So let's go to a vote. All those in favor, press green. If no, press red. And we'll close the vote in ten seconds. Okay, I declare that passes by a simple majority vote, three eighty-one to ten. Article three eighty. No, that was the Whittier. Article Six, the Essex County Technical Institute Budget. Pav Niedler of the School Committee moves to raise and appropriate the sum of three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to pay the town's share of the ensuing year's annual operating debt service expense of the Essex County Technical Institute. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Dougherty. Mr. Stevens.
I'll play the part of Pav Niedler. So this is essentially a carbon copy of the previous article. The only thing that changes is the number. Again, I mentioned that the state sets the tuition rate. So the tuition rate tied in with some transportation costs and other assessments for Essex Tech comes to twenty thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars per student. We expect a total of sixteen students from Ipswich will attend Essex Tech in the fall.
Okay, Finance Committee?
Finance Committee unanimously recommends this article. Everything we said previously about Whittier, we are now talking about Essex Tech. It's yet another alternative education for our students.
Thank you. And the Select Board?
Select Board unanimously supports and recommends this article.
Okay, anyone care to be heard? So we'll go to a vote. All those in favor, please press the green button. If no, press the red. And we'll leave the voting open for ten seconds. Okay, I declare that passes by a two-thirds vote, three seventy-one to eight. Article Seven is the transfer of the fiscal twenty-two appropriated budget funds to Education Stabilization Fund. Greg Stevens of the School Committee moves to transfer one million, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars from the fiscal twenty-two school budget to the Education Stabilization Fund. The second by Mr. Dougherty from the Finance Committee. Mr. Stevens.
So it's a fairly common occurrence at the end of a fiscal year for schools to have some unspent budget money left over that we ask town meeting for support to return back to our stabilization fund. This year's number is a bit higher for, mainly due to the, the large amount of COVID financial support we've received from the government. We received approximately two million dollars in ESER funds and some other various COVID-related grants. What that helped us do was allocate those grants to parts of the budget that we had already sort of allocated. So staffing, for example, we were able to cover some staffing costs, some technology costs as well from those COVID funds. We also had some unexpected savings on our health insurance policy this year, or premiums this year, as well as some savings on our special ed piece of the budget. So again, the number looks large. What it will do is go back to our stabilization fund to help offset the one point eight million dollar stabilization fund withdrawal that's happening to fund this budget for FY twenty-three. So again, it's standard procedure. It's just the number looks a little bit bigger than normal. But it's not a bad thing to have excess funds that we've been able to, you know, budget for properly and put toward future school budgets.
Okay, Mr. White, Finance Committee's position?
Yes, good evening. Rob White, Finance Committee, Ninety-One Pine Swamp. Finance Committee unanimously supports this. This is in your Finance Committee report on page thirty-six. Should you be interested in where the free cash money is going, it will be spent in the next few articles. So Greg really was spot on here. You know, the one point three million going into the stabilization fund is great news. This is school budget money going in, not, not free cash, so very unique. And the School Committee, the superintendent deserves a tremendous amount of credit here for both pursuing and maximizing these funds. As Greg said, the ESER funds, which is the elementary and special and secondary school emergency relief funds, are a source of this, and this is great news for the town. So as Greg said, the money goes into the stabilization fund. It was just spent in a previous article at one point, let's call it one point nine million. At the end, when this money goes in, it will, the balance for the end of this year, so really our starting balance for FY twenty-four will be one point seven million. Thank you.
Okay, and the Select Board?
The Select Board unanimously recommends this article.
Does anyone care to be heard? So we'll go to a vote. All those in favor, press the green button. Those opposed, press the red button, and we'll leave the voting open for another ten seconds. Okay, I declare that passes by a two-thirds vote, three seventy-two to thirteen. Article Eight is the stabilization funding. Tammy Jones of the Select Board moves to transfer two hundred and ninety thousand dollars from free cash to the stabilization fund. Second by Mr. Dougherty. Second by Mr. Dougherty. Ms. Jones, please.
Basically, we are moving, we're asking you to help us move $250,000 of free cash into our stabilization fund. It's a rainy day fund. This is part of our fiscal management of the town. It maintains greater stability for our town's budgets and lets us weather storms. We, with the support and recommendation of the Finance Committees and our Finance Directors, have tried to continue to maintain a solid stabilization fund. So, we are requesting your support in transferring $250,000 over to our stabilization fund. And the Select Board unanimously supports this.
Okay. And Mr. White, Finance Committee?
Finance Committee unanimously supports this as well. So, just as Tammy said, we're moving $290,000 into the stabilization fund. Should be noted that this is $100,000 more than last year, so that's great news. The balance on that fund is 2.26 million. And you might say, well, why do we want that? And where did the money come from? And the money came from the COVID numbers, the COVID funds. The balance is a key part of helping Ipswich reach and maintain their credit rating, which is AAA, according to S&amp;P Global. And it's very important in coming years for our major investments. We will need these funds. And as you know, all decisions go to Town Meeting. You'll have a choice, and we will be looking for your support on those investments in the coming years. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone care to be heard on this? So, let's go to a vote. This is a simple majority vote. All those in favor, press the green. Opposed, press the red. And we'll keep it open for another 10 seconds. I declare that passes by a two-thirds vote, three sixty-three to fourteen. Article nine, other post-employment benefits funding. Ms. Jones of the Select Board moves to raise and appropriate $75,635 and to transfer $686,960 from free cash and to transfer said sums to the OPEB Trust Fund. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Burke. Ms. Jones.
Okay. The Select Board, in cooperation and coordination with the FinCom and our Finance Directors, have been slowly trying to work away at our OPEB liability. This is funding that takes care of our retirement post, as it says, it's post-employment benefits funding. It's for people who have retired. We have an obligation as a town, as do all towns, to fund this amount, this money for people in the future, I'm sorry. We have set up a formula, which has been working for the last number of years, to transfer a certain portion of our funds into this OPEB funding. It has been, not only has worked well for our town, but has now become the model for other towns in Massachusetts. This is, this is an obligation that we have as a town, and we have developed a plan over the last number of years to figure out how to slowly chip away at our obligations. So, we, the Select Board unanimously recommends this, and we seek your support in making sure that we continue to support our retirees in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fay, Finance Committee?
Jamie Fay, Finance Committee. As Tammy mentioned, this is one of those unfunded liabilities. We have a lot of liabilities, but really only two that are unfunded, one being our pensions for the town, which is about $44 million, and the other being the other post-employment benefits, which is essentially health insurance for our retirees. Our total liability for that is about $32 million. And as Tammy mentioned, we've made enormous progress in starting to chip away at that. In fact, we're more than chipping away at it. We've put aside over $8 million so far, primarily within the last five years. So, we are really making progress on this. So, our remaining liability is about $24 million. So, it's, we've taken a very proactive approach, and we've got a good funding stream going, and we're hoping that this will continue to be reduced. We get a lot of questions about this, actually, on the Finance Committee, about people. People are really uncomfortable with the idea of having an unfunded liability because, yeah, we owe it, whether we have the resources or not, we owe it. So, we in the Finance Committee take this very seriously. And in fact, what we proposed this year is to do a study to see whether it makes financial sense for us to, in fact, borrow, essentially issue a bond for the remaining amount of our liability. And we think, once that analysis is done, that will actually be cheaper for us to borrow, given relatively low interest rates right now. Cheaper to borrow the money, bank it, invest it with the state pension reserve investment trust, which is getting a very good return on the money that we parked with them already. And we may end up actually getting a better return on our money than the interest cost of the bond. So, we're going to look into that this year, and we'll be back to you next year with a recommendation on that. The Finance Committee supports this unanimously. Thank you.
You had a question, Mitch?
Yeah, thank you. Mitchell Lo, 33 Summer Street. Could someone explain how much of that is coming from the school budget and how much of that's coming from the town budget?
Jamie, can you answer that for us?
So, none of the funding for this article comes from either, essentially either the town or the school budget. We, our funding formula essentially takes this off the top. So, we put this money, because it's a liability we have as a community, we take it off the top and put it in. Within individual town budgets, there's a portion of the funding that is related to the actual number of employees in that department. But for the most part, it's free cash. It's about $670,000 of free cash, I believe, and about $75,000 in other funds.
All right. So, like the 1.3 million from, you know, that was moved over from the school budget to their, to their stabilization fund and also from the town stabilization funding, would that in the future be spent on this?
No.
Okay.
I mean, it could be. If the Town Meeting decided to vote stabilization funds for that purpose, it could be, but it would be a Town Meeting vote, and we certainly don't anticipate that.
And that would be a two-thirds vote to take it out of stabilization.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else care to be heard on this? All right, so let's go to a vote. All those in favor, press green. Those opposed, press no. And we'll leave the voting open for another 10 seconds. I declare that passes by a two-thirds vote, three ninety-seven to twenty-two. Okay. Article 10 is the Annual Capital Plan. Tammy Jones of the Select Board moves to transfer from free cash $1,428,507 to raise and appropriate $70,025 to transfer from the overlay surplus account $40,000 and to transfer from the waterways fund $30,000 for a total capital spending of $1,568,532 to fund the capital budget set forth in Article 10 of the warrant for this Town Meeting, and that any remaining funds be transferred to the Capital Stabilization Fund. Ms. Jones?
In working with all of our departments, we've carefully crafted this list of capital expenses that we believe need to be funded. It is a list that we recommend that you support in its entirety.
Okay. Thank you. And Chub Widdon, did you want to contribute something to this as well? Or just had something to?
No, I'm just here for questions.
Okay. Okay. Mr. White, the Finance Committee's endorsement?
Finance Committee voted unanimously to support this, seven to zero. Unanimously, sorry about that, guys. Just some quick points here is that this is an investment of almost 1.6 million. Ninety-six percent of it is coming from free cash. As I mentioned on Article seven, eight, nine, and 10, that's free cash that's funding most of this. You know, the capital plan is an area that I just kind of want to put a spotlight on for a second because, you know, if you were part of our town a decade ago and participated in these meetings, you know, we've had challenges funding the capital plan in the past. Our town manager and our superintendent have a committee that vets all these items. There's a hierarchy of priorities that is established. And what I want to emphasize, and it was emphasized earlier by other people, is we're losing our town manager to another community. Our superintendent and our town manager work very, very well together. You'll see, and by the way, the details of the capital plan are on page 28 of the Finance Committee report, that 656,000 or 41% of the capital plan is investing in our school buildings, your buildings. And that was a challenge to have done in the past. So, I want to credit a really good collaboration between the school administration and the town administration on this specific article and the importance of capital planning. Just two quick other point, or two quick points. The wind turbine, you'll see that, that's on our list. That is really an offset account for the replacement of the turbines sometime in the coming years. So, that's basically a self-funding of the replacement. And in the past, our police cars were a part of the operating budget. Now, they're part of the capital budget, and they're more expensive because they now need to be hybrid electric, and that has to do with our participation in the Green Community Program. So, as I said unanimously, the Finance Committee supports this budget.
Okay. I've been asked to relay a question. Maybe this is the best answer by the town manager, but I got a call from Rita Pelletier, Topsfield Road. She told me how old she is. I won't tell you, but she's 20 years older than me. And she said that the doctors don't want her to drive at night, but she had a question about Article 10. I said, okay, what's your question? We had a lovely chat. She told me about a few other things. I think she's watching. Hello, Rita. She had a question about the $50,000 for the LED lighting for the tennis courts. And she wondered why we're spending that on that when we have other things to spend it on. Those are her words. So, maybe you can answer Rita's question?
Sure. Anthony Marino, Town Manager. We have this broken out in two separate sections, one just to show it still is $50,000 total. It shows up under the schools at $25,000 and under the town. And that's sort of why we brought that forward. Obviously, the schools and the children, the students get a lot of use out of the tennis courts, but also the community uses those. They've got older, what's called sodium bulbs there, that aren't very energy efficient and very difficult and expensive to replace. So, we decided to invest, just convert them over to LED, do it one time, use less power, and it'll require less maintenance. That way, the choice was done. They are not only school tennis courts, but they're used a lot by the community at night. So, that's why we have them on the capital plan.
Okay. Okay, Rita, I know you're watching. Sorry you couldn't make it, but I hope that answers your question. Mr. Josephson, you had a question about Article 10?
Yes. Eric Josephson, 46 Washington Street. I have a question on the installation of new communication tower for the public safety. Where's the location of that tower?
Up at Great Neck, where the water tank is. We're currently getting ready to replace the water tank, and on the existing water tank, there's a lot of communication equipment. We're going to locate this tower, aluminum tower, right next door to the water tank, and it's going to take all of the public safety communication equipment on there. We were able to actually, thankful to the state and Senator Tarr's office, and Rep. Belcito's office, we were able to get an additional $60,000 from Senator Tarr and an extra $25,000 to help offset this expense as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anyone else care to be heard?
Sorry, Town Hill Water Tank. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so we'll go to a vote. All those in favor, press the green button, and those opposed, the red button. And we'll leave it open for another 10 seconds. Chub, did I miss, did you want to say something else? No? Okay, I declare that passes by a two-thirds vote, four eleven to twenty. Article 11, Home Rule Petition. Tammy Jones of the Select Board moves to authorize the Select Board to petition the General Court to amend the Town Charter, Chapter 620 of the Acts of 1966, as amended and set forth in Article 11 of the warrant for this Town Meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dougherty. Ms. Jones, please.
Okay. Basically, we have, according to our Town Charter, only one member of, only one town employee in our town is required to live in Ipswich, and that is the town manager. Over four years ago, we asked, as a town, we asked the Government Studies Committee to please look into this. They came back with a recommendation that we should get rid of it. They said we are one of a very, very small handful of towns that had a residency requirement and that there was, they could, it was not best practice, it was not in the best interest of the town. We also, a little more than four years ago, had a consultant come in to help us choose a new town manager at that point. Again, very strong recommendations that this was an impediment to hiring the best person we could for the role of town manager. So, basically, the position of town manager, the best way to think of it is, they are the CEO of a very large nonprofit called the Town of Ipswich. They help us manage a $30 million budget. And given that, the Select Board, and who, in our roles, we represent the citizens of Ipswich, it's our responsibility to hire the best possible manager for the Town of Ipswich. This piece of our charter is an impediment for us hiring the best person we can to carry out the will of Town Meeting and your elected representatives, who are the Select Board. This article, of course, doesn't preclude somebody from living, who lives in Ipswich, to hire, to be hired as a town manager. It just says it allows us to hire the best person. Really, what is most important thing, in our opinion, is what the town manager does and that they do their job, not where they sleep at night. Again, this is sort of an arcane and archaic rule in our charter. It doesn't apply to any other member of our community, and we strongly recommend that you support this article.
Mr. Dougherty, the Finance Committee's endorsement?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I get the fun ones tonight. I get the town manager and the override one, so this will be interesting. The Finance Committee supports this article unanimously, seven to zero. And I'll be honest, I was really on the fence with this one. You know, full disclosure, townie, born and raised, fourth generation Ipswich. I can see my wife's eyes rolling right now as I say that. Right? And, you know, in theory, yeah, would you like someone who's running the town to be from town and know the town and know the townspeople and know the history and the culture and have a direct impact? Absolutely. Who wouldn't? But taking off my townie hat and putting on my FinCom hat, we have to look at the best interests for the town. And Select Person Jones made a good point. The town manager right now is the only person required to live in town. Not the superintendent, not the police chief, not the fire chief, just the town manager. And as a Finance Committee, we realize that by limiting ourselves to Ipswich only, that could come at a cost because you could potentially have to offset someone coming in town by increasing their salary above and beyond maybe what is necessarily justified, providing them with a housing stipend so they can meet the requirements of coming in on the second year, first year of their second contract. And as a Finance Committee, we have to look at the townspeople's tax dollar. We have to look at what you give the town each year and put it to best use. And so, the Finance Committee, including myself, support this article. And like Select Person Jones said, it doesn't preclude people from town to apply. It just lets our pool get a little bigger of possible applicants. And let's be honest, I mean, you could have someone who's been in town their entire lives who doesn't put a lot of time into this job. Let's say they live in town. They could stay remote working. That doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to, you know, come to work every day in person, not do the Zoom, and, you know, it's really not a factor in that case. And I know another thing that you guys are thinking. Well, we want to make sure that the town manager is affected by the policies he's putting together, right, to put in front of the Select Board. But let's be real, the Select Board are the elected officials. They're the ones that ultimately, that's where the buck stops. They make the decision. So, we need to realize that although we may want to have someone from town, someone who knows the history and the background, be the town manager, ultimately, we also don't want to negatively negatively handicap ourselves when we're trying to find the best candidate to run the town successfully. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Nickus?
Good evening. Michael stole a lot of my thunder, so I don't want to rehash a lot of it. One of the most important things that a town manager has to do is he or she has to be available to staff, and has to be available and present for his directorate or her directorates to run their town the way the Select Board wants. There's your accountability. Whether somebody lives in town or not, doesn't necessarily mean they'll be available to the people that work for that person. That's where the Select Board can hold that town manager accountable if they're not upholding that. So I think there's enough checks and balances just in that alone to say that we don't need to have someone actually reside in Ipswich to have Ipswich's best interest in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Weatherall, did you want to speak in favor or against, or do you have a question, or?
Yes, I'd like to speak.
You just stand there.
Could I, could I speak?
You wait. Of course.
Helen Weatherall, Forty-four Fellows Road. So I take great exception to this amendment. And to hear Select Board Member Ms. Howe remark about that the town manager is essentially a CEO of the town, if the suggestion is that this is a corporation that needs management, I'm not so sure I agree with that. So many years ago, I mentioned to a professor of mine at Harvard University when I was taking a summer class, and the man said to me, Ipswich, that's where everyone wants to live. And it stayed with me. And many times now, serving on planning board and attending meetings and conversations on the sidewalk, I've heard again and again and again and again, my daughter wants to stay in Ipswich, my mother wants to stay in Ipswich, how can they stay here? We need to keep it affordable. In other words, it's highly desirable. So on the one hand, we hear how desirable the town is, and now we're being told it's an undue burden to require our town manager to reside in Ipswich. To me...
Right. Focus on the question here, whether we should change the charter.
We should not change the charter.
Okay, and tell us why not?
Let me be clear. We should not change the charter. And I think the arguments made are very weak. To say that the reason we shouldn't require this of the town manager is that we did not require it of other, other people with positions in town, I, I think that's, it's not comparable, and it's not effective. So I guess if I'm going to be brief, that's my point. I disagree. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Champion?
Gary Champion, is on. Gary Champion?
Is the microphone working?
Hello.
There you go.
Gary Champion, three Palomino Way. I am a member of the Town Government Study Committee. I just want to make a clarification on this. In two thousand seventeen, the town meeting agreed to a recommendation of the Town Government Study Committee that town manager not be required, instead of being required to move here immediately, be required to move in the second, rather the first year of the second three-year term. That gives the Select Board time to warm up to the town manager, town manager get to know what the town is. And our research showed that it is rather unusual for there to be a requirement for residency. But I think voters might want to consider, and I, as I will do before I vote, in this past four years, has town manager been effective? And, in, living in Linfield, and I think he's been effective, but you all need to decide what your priorities are. But in two thousand seventeen, it was just a change from meeting, moving immediately to moving in the first year of the second three-year term. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Name and address, please?
Torrey.
You have three minutes.
Do you hear me? Yep.
Yep.
Torrey Bottomley, Sixty Central Street. Residency is critical to having a representative local government. Prior to two thousand nineteen, the town manager needed to reside in Ipswich. The charter was revised to town manager must live in town, not at the end of the first, nor the second, but the fourth year. The end of the fourth year for the current manager was April twenty-two. How did that work out for us? A year into the second term, the town manager has taken a job in Winthrop. I have an email here, written to me by the town manager on the twenty-eighth of February, weeks before his departure, stating, "I fully intend to honor my contract and the residency requirement." Now we are here, asked to make another amendment. Fifteen miles, we live in Ipswich. Is there anyone here that really believes that they could understand the challenges of the citizens in Rowley, Essex, or Hamilton, a mere five miles away from us? It's pure folly to say that a non-resident would have the same commitment, cultural perspective, as a resident. One argument was other towns have such laws, but we are Ipswich. We want what's best for our town. Or why even say that we have a representative government? Housing was brought up several times in discussing regarding the current town manager. One member said if we didn't pass this fifteen-mile extension, we would have to increase our over one hundred and forty thousand dollar salary substantially to add a housing supplement. Next, the very evening that many of us had in our hands the entertainment policy written by the town manager, the chair insisted the manager manages but does not write policy. This policy drew crowds of citizens to the select meetings, the majority in protest. Section eleven G of the town charter says the manager must keep the Select Board fully advised as to the needs of the town. This was an example of a fail. Section eleven L of the charter says the town manager shall appoint all necessary town officers, so the manager appoints officers and heads of committees, which make very, very important decisions for our town, planning and zoning. One head of a committee, who's a non-resident, feels there are hundreds, if not a thousand acres of Ipswich, which should, could and should still be developed.
Excuse me. I'm going to ask you to sum up. You've got ten more seconds.
Okay. To conclude, the citizens of Ipswich do not like being misled. The wise town government knew that enforcement is a weakness, a vulnerability, and therefore residency on day one. It's not that you had to grow up here, but because this requirement ensured the most critical qualification for the job.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
A personal connection, part in the game.
Please have a seat. Debate, again, is limited to three minutes for everyone. Ms. Clement, Skelton?
Thank you. So I, I stood before town meeting, was it four or five years ago, and passionately argued in favor of maintaining the residency requirement. And tonight, I am going to support this article. And, and here's why. The world has changed. And unfortunately, we are in a position where we just don't have the housing stock in this town to be able to say to somebody, come on in, take the job. And there's at least five or ten houses even that you can choose from within, you know, and believe me, one hundred and forty thousand dollars is a lot of money, but it's still not that much money when houses in town are going for six fifty and seven fifty. So as much as personally, I would hope that our next town manager lives here, I think there's great value for them and for us, for them to be part of this community, for their families to be part of this community. I think requiring it really puts us at a disadvantage to hiring the best and the brightest.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, let's go to a vote. Oh, I'm sorry. Absolutely. Absolutely.
So, can people hear me? There it is. All right. Just, thanks, Janice, for those comments. I was going to mention that, too. But I think a couple counterpoints. One is while it's great to know everything that's going on in Ipswich and to know everyone in Ipswich, that also introduces a lot of bias. And it's also really helpful sometimes to have an outside perspective. Right? So I think that's one thing that we should all keep in mind, knowing how other communities do things. Right? Another one is being mindful that these days, there's a lot of office employees who are demanding the ability to work from home. And instead, our town is turning around and demanding where someone lives. It's counterintuitive to everything that's going on these days. The third one is, we need to be mindful about employee resiliency. And I know, I, I call it the pothole theory. I think a lot of people want the town manager to hit every pothole that you drive over so that you know it's there, so you know to go fix it. A town manager is going to get burned out so fast by that. Right? They need a break. They need the ability to go to a restaurant where someone's not going to tap on their shoulder and give them a piece of their ear. Right? They need a break. And just putting someone in their office environment all the time just doesn't work anymore. So I encourage you to support the idea of removing this.
Thank you. Are you saying if he lived on my street, the potholes would be fixed by now?
Support the idea of, what?
Are you saying if he still lived on my street, the potholes would be fixed by now?
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Willie. Kate?
Kate Elliott, a member of the School Committee. The School Committee unanimously is in support of this article, and I think it's largely because of the excellent collaboration we've seen between the superintendent and the town manager. We've seen that it can work, even when the town manager does not live in town. And I think that prior article on capital planning is a good example of that. There's been excellent collaboration between these two town managers, or between these two town administrators, and residency has not affected that. So we encourage you to support this article.
Thank you. Carolyn, did you want to speak to this?
Yes, I do.
You have three minutes.
Is this active? Yeah. Carolyn Britt, one Shagmark Woods. I have, my whole life, been in community development and planning. I've worked with a lot of different town managers. And I think that one of the most important characteristics a town manager can have is understand what investment in community means. And that means that person understands by being invested in the community they live in. Then they can, then they can empathize with how strongly we all feel about where we live. I'd rather have a town manager that lived for thirty or forty years in someplace that they loved than have them move around every time they take a job. So I speak in support. Thank you.
Okay. So we'll go to a vote. All those in favor of the main motion under Article 11, press green. And those opposed, press red. And we'll leave it open for another ten seconds. Give you fifteen seconds. This is a long one. Okay, I declare that passes by two-thirds vote, four oh two to fifty-eight. Article twelve, the override, school operating budget. Okay. Hugh O'Flynn of the School Committee moves to raise and appropriate an additional sum of one million eight hundred thousand dollars for the purposes of funding a portion of the annual, of town's annual operating budget for the fiscal year beginning July two twenty, July one, twenty twenty-two, provided, however, that this appropriations shall be contingent upon approval by the voters at an election of ballot question under Chapter Fifty-nine, allowing the town to raise the funds appropriated hereunder, outside the limits established by Chapter Fifty-nine, Section Twenty-one C. And is there a second? Mr. Dougherty from the Finance Committee. Dr. O'Flynn?
So first of all, I want to take the opportunity to thank everybody. Thanks to the voters for electing me seven times over the many years. Thanks to the members of School Committee who've been tolerant of pontificating. And thanks to the members of all the other committees who've been thoughtful in all their responses and working collaboratively with us. Thanks to the administrators who always are courageous and outstanding leaders, and we have a great group now. Thanks to the teachers and the parents and the students. And most of all, thanks to my family for giving up lots of dad time, calculus study time, and game time for me to get to these meetings. So appreciate all of your support, and I'm going to miss it. And I'll still be on the sidelines for the football games, and I'm sure coming out to all these meetings and doing other things. But thanks very much. So I want, over the next several minutes, I want to use that institutional knowledge and outline the ideology of our multi-year operational override strategy, specifically addressing the causes, the necessity and the long-term plan associated with this operative, this operational override vote. The School Committee recognizes that every operating override is a stress on the taxpayer, which represents a tax increase beyond what typical statute allows. Therefore, it requires clear justification and your support. When I was first elected to the School Committee all the way back in two thousand and three, my wife and I came to that, to the decision that I'd run, because we were proud K-12 graduates of the Ipswich Schools. And we returned specifically to bring our five daughters to these schools. Actually, four daughters at the time. My youngest was born when I was in office. She'll graduate in three weeks, another reason why I'm leaving. So I was worried at the time. Elementary classes that my kids run were big, twenty-seven, twenty-eight kids. With the previous two years, the state had level funded Chapter Seventy, and they cut Chapter Seventy by twenty percent the year I ran. So we saw, you know, big state budget cut. And we had an override on the ballot when I was elected, and the override failed to pass. And so that year, there were more cuts to teachers. There were JV sports were cut, and thank God, Harry Lamprop was put together a golf fundraiser to support the JV sports. Busing was cut. So I joined the Budget Subcommittee because I was interested in the budget. It was the driving force that led me to join the committee. And I was eager to fix it and eager to learn. Like many, I assumed the problem with funding was a primarily state issue, since they'd made the recent cuts. And I look back at the history of state funding, and education reform in this state passed in nineteen ninety-three. Over the following seven, eight years, the budgets to the town from the state went up ten percent plus a year. And we really did see a boost in state funding for a while, for those years when I was looking at things. And realistically, for the last twenty years, the state portion of our budget has been basically status quo. Accounting for inflation, we've really seen no significant increases. In two thousand nine, they promised to bring the minimum up to seventeen-plus percent. That hasn't happened. In two thousand and fifteen, they did increase special education, ELL, and low-income funding. But realistically, they've never made a big change for a town like ours. And we can't control that money. Similarly, we've had boosts from the federal government from time to time, when we had stimulus funds from President Obama, IDEA funds. We saw little temporary boosts from the federal government. And of course, recently, we have COVID funding, which has been great. But still, our primary federal fund is just Title I, which is a small amount of money every year for our budget. So our budget, eighty-four-plus percent of it, is from local taxpayers, from our property taxes. And fortunately, these, these funds are surprisingly stable. We can count on two and a half percent a year, plus whatever growth there is, every year. And it doesn't really get affected dramatically by economic downturn. So that, that's a, that's a stable source of funding. It's great to have. But we are always facing cuts. And the small changes to other funding sources or to other problems, from other problems, were incredibly hard for us to overcome. A few new outside tuitions for special education, a change in state or local funds, or a local slowdown really killed us. So I, I was interested in how we could fix it, and we took local measures right away. So we tried adding fees. And so over the many years I've been in the committee, these are some of the strategies. We added athletic fees. We increased athletic fees over and over and again. We added extracurricular fees. We added busing fees. We added parking fees. We added school choice students aggressively in the first seven or ten years I was on the committee. We went up to almost two hundred choice students, kids from Rowley primarily, who came here to get their education, because we opened that up so we could get more money. We spent all of our FEFI money, which was increasing at the time, this is before the, the change in the FEFI trust, we put it all into the regular budget. We had an outside audit review of our budget. We did, we cut custodians and guidance books and professional education to keep the cuts away from the kids. And when we had to, when we really ran out of ideas to fundraise, we had high-stakes overrides. And these, sometimes won, but equally often lost. And when we lost, we cut programming, and we cut teachers. We cut classroom teachers, usually going from twenty kids in a class to twenty-seven kids in a class in elementary schools. We cut librarians, music, art, drama, phys ed, languages. Core teachers had to teach out of subject. We even moved things to half-year teaching to avoid full-year commitments for teachers. So all these cuts created educational deficits. And sometimes we were able to recover from those cuts a few years later and add positions back in a subsequent override. But we always had deficits, and each override was a challenge. And each fee cutter override did keep teachers in front of kids, and it didn't address the fundamental problem, which was clear to us and structural. So about six or seven, actually, eight or nine years ago now, we went, we worked with the FinCom, the Selectman, and we looked at our the FinCom, the Selectmen, and we looked at our revenue growth over time. And we realized that overall, with Prop 2.5 and growth, we get about 3.1% a year of growth of our tax base. And that was bumpy, but it was pretty consistent. And our budget, which is 81-plus percent salary and benefits, and those are dictated by steps and lanes and agreements with our educators union, which were always below or at best competitive with neighboring districts, that growth averaged about 4.25% a year. So we had basically 3.1% more in taxes and 4.25% more in costs. And that structural deficit meant in a typical year, our budget fell behind by half a million dollars every year. So there was a reason we were battling. And asking for half a million dollars every year leaves us vulnerable, leaves us vulnerable to losing one year, not getting it back the next year, going for a bigger override the next year. The vicissitudes of state and local funding, the changes in student population, the changes in the makeup of the individual students, like special education funds, all caused uncertainty and instability. And that was the rule. So in 2014, we created a plan that we thought would give stability. We worked closely with the other boards. We created a budget calculator, which carefully modeled our past and projected future budgets. And we proposed a multi-year override strategy. That created a stabilization fund, which you see funded here today, which ironed out uncertainty. And that year, we lost the vote at the ballot box, and we made big cuts. The following year, we were opposed to make even bigger cuts. And we went back and we redid our numbers and we asked again. And that year, we did get the override through, and that was a five-year projected override, which would be a multi-year budget funding mechanism, which would create a stabilization fund into which we deposit money, like we put in $1.3 million this year, and use that to level out the funding for our budget over time, creating that, filling that gap between 3.1 and 4.25, but really giving us stability, giving us resilience, giving us the opportunity to have the schools that were appropriate for our kids. So with prudent management, and honestly, with increased funds from the state and federal government in recent years, and also because of some lack of services provided to students because of COVID time and hybrid time, we've been able to stretch that override through the last seven years. And we've done it because we've been responsible, and we've been overseen by the town meeting every year and overseen by the FinCom every year. But we've stayed on our numbers, and we've been careful about what we've done. So over the last seven years, we've had stable educational funding, consistent age-appropriate student-to-teacher ratios, full program of arts and athletics and other extracurriculars. We've carefully followed our multi-year plan, even with the additional funding, as you saw tonight evidenced by the previous articles. And it's allowed us to extend the override. This year, the schools are spending more than $1.8 million over what we're taking in the tax revenues. The difference is made up by funds that we previously reserved. And when those funds run out, we're in deficit, and we can't fund them anymore. We have to make cuts. This override will support our schools for another five years at the current level of services. We'll continue to strictly adhere to our plan. And our recent negotiated settlement with our educators mean that we have certainty on our expense side as well. So we've dotted our i's, crossed our t's, signed an agreement before coming to you with our educators, so we have basically stable funding in plan for what we're going to be doing. We know that children thrive in a stable, supportive school community. Funding certainty allows educators to focus on their students and allows administrators to innovate and advance the quality and equity of education. Although this is an override, it's not for more. It's for stability. We've proven to be responsible to our plan. We're supported by the other boards, and we have the confidence in of experience and of success with the previous plan. So please join us, vote for this override of $1.8 million, and vote again next week at the ballot box. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dougherty, the Finance Committee's endorsement?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So this was actually the Finance Committee's most contentious article within the warrant. Ultimately, the Finance Committee voted in support, five in favor and three in opposition. I will be reporting on the majority support, and then my colleague will be reporting on the minority report. I would like to make something very clear. For those that are in the descending vote, it doesn't mean that part of the Finance Committee doesn't believe in the stability in education. It just has to do with methodology and the approach of appropriations. So we have before us an override, right? The school spends X amount, and it only brings in this amount, and there's a gap. And every once in a while, we need to fill that gap. Now, some of these costs are mandated by the state and feds. Some of these costs are, most of these costs are mandated by union contracts to keep great staff in our schools. And what our job is, is to make sure that these schools stay funded. And we're doing that tonight by making sure that we have an override passed. If the override doesn't pass tonight, does that mean we're going to start, or the school committee is going to start taking away things left and right? No. But as the chairman, as Hugh had pointed out, by not passing the override tonight, we lose our runway of opportunity to make sure that we don't lose programs moving down the road. Like a healthy roof to a home, a school system is the healthy attribute of a town. If you don't have a good school system, people are not going to want to move here. If you don't have a good school system, people aren't going to want to establish the next 30 years here and invest in the community. You have to keep the school system in good standing. When I went to the school system here, we were a blue-ribbon community. It was a very proud thing. And we want to make sure we keep those standards for our next generation. As I mentioned during our school budget article earlier, the pandemic had real effects, okay? And I know that people have been hearing that for the past two years, and they're sick of it, I'm sick of it, we get it. But let's be real, when it comes to our students, it had a real impact. Remote learning, not being around their students and colleagues, not being around their classmates, and to, it's kind of a perfect storm because now we're looking at, the school committee did a great job of extending the last override. And unfortunately, the ending of that is right around the time that we're coming out of a pandemic. So it would be detrimental to our school system and our students if we started cutting programs as we're finally emerging from this pandemic and making sure that the gaps in education that we saw from the pandemic are then going to be battered even further by loss of programs and staff and support staff. We got to make sure now more than ever that an override like this passes so that we can continue the level of education. We're going to see additional IEPs coming from this pandemic. We're going to see lower enrollment rates into higher education. We're going to see lower test scores. That's just a fact. What we need to do as a school committee, as a finance committee, as a select board, community, neighbor, et cetera, we need to make sure that the school right now has the resources that they need to make sure that those gaps do not go further down. Now, I will say that right now, approving an override is cheaper in the long run than if we wait. And if we wait, and if we lose programs, it's only going to cost more and take more time to get those programs back. So my suggestion to you, for those who are not in favor of the override, don't not support today's override. Focus on narrowing that budget gap so we don't have to come back for as many overrides in the future. Thank you.
Mr. White, you want to give us the minority position?
Yes, I am. So I am here to speak for the minority of the Finance Committee, which, as Michael said, we voted 5-3 to support this article, but wanted to give you an idea, those that didn't support it, what they were thinking. And so just to frame this, and by the way, Hugh did a great job explaining our past override, the fact that we have this calculator, we planned for five years, they've executed and completed eight years. So a lot of kudos to the school committee, the school administration for that, and the Finance Committee, those that voted against this. We were focused on the fact that, you know, over three nights, we discussed the school budget, the learning loss. Michael mentioned the learning loss. Hugh probably mentioned the learning loss. Everyone should be focused on the learning loss because that is the most important thing to be concerned with on the school. That's my bias, sorry about that. But what we're talking about is the FY '23 budget. And you should note that there are no cuts in the budget. So if this override does not pass, we're not going to cut. And we also have strong financials. So we talked about in Article 8, the school stabilization fund, the 1.3 million going in there, now realizing we're losing 1.8 just to fund the school. So we will end this year, the FY '23 year, with 1.7. In addition to that 1.7, we have $643,000 at the end of FY '23 in the special education stabilization fund. So that contributes to the FY '24 budget, if the school desires it. In addition to that, and Hugh was right, we are not getting our fair share of Chapter 70, but we are getting more Chapter 70, up to $300,000 a year going forward. That's kind of the latest news in one of our hearings. So that's also great news. But really, I think the desire of those that didn't vote for the override really has to do with the timing. This isn't about the school committee. The school committee's done a really great job. School administration is striving to get every grant they possibly can get. However, we are sitting in a spot where our residents are dealing with a lot of inflation. You know, so when we take a profile of our town, we have over a third of our town on fixed income. So the question is, could we pull back on this with inflation? As everyone knows, energy is up 40% this year or within the year. You know, food is up 20%. We don't know what the future looks like. The idea was, hey, let's hold off one year. We can get through '23 without cuts. We can get through '24 without cuts, and then we'll endorse an override. But that was kind of the thinking, and it was simply to protect our residents that are feeling pain during this inflationary period. And in addition to that, we have the public safety building. We need to digest that, see how that looks and feels in the tax rate. And that is kind of the premise of why we were opposed to this. Again, this will be required in the future. This is just pushing this off one year.
Thank you very much. Mr. Whitmore, the position of the Select Board, please?
Yep. Good evening. Willie Whitmore, Select Board, Kinsman Court. The Select Board voted in favor of this Article 4 to 1. I'm here to summarize our support. First, members of the board recognize the careful thoughtfulness and cautious budgeting approach that the school committee has taken in the past. An education stabilization fund has allowed the school committee to provide an adequate and steady budget for our schools, create consistent and better curriculum plans, and minimize costs to taxpayers. The previous override was scheduled to last five years and was stretched to eight. Spending is not extravagant, and a reinvestment is due. Second, this override request was identified as a key need by the Ipswich Strategic Planning Working Group, whose plan was endorsed by the school committee, Select Board, and Finance Committee. This override request is a strategic ask, and approving it now is important. As a community, we should support a smart and preemptive budgeting approach. Let's not wait until after we have to cut staff or reduce educational programs. We don't need more problems. As a member of the Select Board, I can tell you what I've learned about kicking that proverbial can down the road or waiting for inflation. Ultimately, more cans will appear. It becomes a challenge to know which can to kick. The cans never go away, and they usually somehow get more expensive. It's best for us to address this issue now. Third, the Select Board understands the vital role that our learning institutions play in our community. Our youngest residents need our help. Our teachers and staff deserve our support. A strong school system is the foundation of a vibrant community. We should invest in it accordingly. Please support this warrant article.
Okay. So now we will go to the vote. And we've been, with the presentations from everyone, been 20 minutes, so certainly don't want to quell any debate, but we're welcome to it. But just remind you, we've already been at this for 20 minutes. So, yes, sir. Name and address, please. You have three minutes.
Yes, good evening, everyone. My name is Sasha Sopick. I live at 89 Pine Swamp Road. I've lived in Ipswich for over 15 years. I have two boys that have gone through the school system, one who's graduated, another one that's in 10th grade. When my wife and I moved to Ipswich, the schools were the main reason that we came here. I've been a proud supporter of Ipswich schools our entire time, and I've been particularly proud of the enthusiasm of the community, all of you here tonight, for continuing to support our schools. Tonight, I'm being asked to vote yes to continue to show your support. Passing this override is about maintaining the level of education that our kids have today. We saw significant cuts after 2014. We want to make sure that that doesn't happen again, that no other family has to experience that like we did. If you have kids in the school, voting yes is about keeping the class sizes small. It's about keeping the math and science programs, like STEAM, available to all of your kids. It's about AP classes and foreign languages staying available. It's making sure that every single child has an opportunity to take the art and music classes that they want. Many of you don't have kids in the school, but voting yes means maintaining the growth and vitality of Ipswich. It's about bringing new families into Ipswich and keeping these families here. It's about bringing new businesses into Ipswich and keeping our current businesses profitable. Think about what drew you to Ipswich originally, or if you grew up here, think about why you stayed. I think most of you will see that the schools are a key part of that. I ask you to continue to support Ipswich education and to please vote yes tonight and next week on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you very much. Ms. Alexson, three minutes.
So, good evening. Linda Alexson, 19 Juniper Street, and I am a member of the Select Board. And I speak to you as a member of that Select Board, but because I was the lone vote against this article, I'm not permitted to speak where my colleagues speak. That's ridiculous and most disrespectful rule set aside. I believe it's my obligation to explain my vote against this article. It was appreciative that this year, for the very first time, at least that I recall, the school committee provided a budget presentation to the Select Board, although it was much more condensed version than the three evenings that they spent with the Finance Committee. I, and many of those I've heard from, do not support the override this year because of the timing. We're all facing unprecedented inflation without corresponding increases in our pay. The cost for basic necessities, as we just heard from the Finance Committee, for things such as groceries, gasoline, home heating oil, residential water rates, and the like, have skyrocketed out of control with no immediate end in sight. The price of home heating oil alone has just about doubled from a year ago, costing an average homeowner well over $1,000 a year. This requires some, if not most, residents to make cuts in any extras they might like to enjoy, and for some, they're making cuts in other necessities, such as food, medications, et cetera. My vote against this override as a member of your Select Board may not represent my colleagues on the board, but it definitely represents the concerns of many Ipswich residents I have been in touch with, resulting from the purely realistic math of increased expenses versus the lack of increased resources to pay. The school committee indicated that this override request could wait and that programs and services will not be cut this year. So why not wait another year and see how the dust settles on our general financial situation, both locally, nationally, and globally? Thanks.
Thank you very much. Yes, name and address, please. Three minutes.
My name's Marsha Gray, and I live at 3 Beechwood Road. I've lived in Ipswich for 20 years. My husband attended and graduated from Ipswich Public Schools, and today, we have three kids in the schools, a senior graduating from the high school, sophomore, and a seventh grader. I've lived through previous overrides. I understand the implications. I appreciate what Linda Alexson just had to say about inflation. Collectively, we're all feeling it. But I also very much agree with what Willie Whitmore said about the can getting kicked down the road and there being other cans competing with this can. And I just want to give you a sense for what it was like when the 2014 override didn't pass. My husband and I were on the brink of sending our oldest from elementary school to middle school. It's a big enough transition and a good year, but that year, it was compounded by the fact that the override created huge cuts, decimated the middle school, pushed the average class size at the elementary level, where our daughter was a second grader, to 28 kids. If you've ever volunteered as a parent to a teacher who has 28 kids to supervise in the second grade, I can assure you, it is anything but controlled chaos. It is worse than that. in the second grade, I can assure you, it is anything but controlled chaos. It is worse than that. And it also created a situation in some of the classrooms where there were more students than desks or chairs could fit in the classroom. The impact to the kids was immediate. It was devastating. Things I always thought were essential to an education, like school librarians, social studies, music, foreign languages, they were gone, just gone, and their absence was felt. It was a dark time, one we thankfully rebuilt from because of the voters' support for the override in 2015. And since then, the schools have returned to a point of pride in the town. There is a healthy, and I emphasize that word "healthy," not extravagant, not wasteful, not overly robust, but healthy selection of courses, extracurriculars, and sports for the kids, matched with a strong staff of teachers, guidance counselors, and social workers, all of which are so necessary coming out of this pandemic when these kids are just beginning to get a taste for normalcy. I have also observed in the last eight years, a school committee committed to being a good steward of the budget. And I have challenged them in years past. They will tell you. They are spending judiciously. They are conserving where possible, communicating with the public transparently, and they remain determined to stretch out their ask for money from the town. And they've gone well beyond the initially promised five years to eight years. So asking to go another year is too much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition? Okay, next, in support?
Michelle Hunter, sixty-seven Turkey Shore. I'm a mom of three daughters in Ipswich. My oldest is a first grader at the Winthrop School. I also have a four and two-year-old who will eventually be attending the Ipswich Public Schools. I've also been a member of the Winthrop School Council for the past two years. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of myself and not the council. My husband and I moved to Ipswich about ten years ago, in part due to the excellent public school system here. I vividly remember when I was pregnant with my first daughter in 2014, learning that the override failed, and this made us question our decision to raise our family in Ipswich. We learned about the cuts to the teachers and staff, the increased classroom sizes, the cuts to the librarians, the cuts to the music program, et cetera. But luckily, the override passed in 2015, and my daughter has benefited from that override. She currently enjoys a small class size of eighteen students. She had fifteen last year. She has the opportunity to go to library every week. I get to see her come home excited every Wednesday to show me her new book, and this has increased her enthusiasm for reading and has improved her reading skills. I feel that she's absolutely thriving in the Ipswich Public Schools, and that's due to the amazing teachers and staff we have here. The teachers and staff really are the bread and butter of our schools, and the override is what will continue to support them. I also wanted to speak as a member of the council. I've learned over the past couple of years of the increased difficulties that students have experienced socially, emotionally, and academically as a result of the pandemic. And now is the time to continue to support the counselors and the teachers and to have that staff because students really need it now, and any cuts would be devastating at this time. So we encourage you to support the override so that the current students can continue to thrive and so that future students have the opportunity to do so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, name and address, please. Welcome.
Good evening. Sorry. Emily Smith, five Birch Lane. I'm standing here in support of Linda Alexson. And if we're going to talk about kicking cans, we should also talk about buckets. I believe we were told that there are fifteen buckets catching rain in the decrepit buildings that we have for our elementary school students. I know we're here to talk about an override, not buildings, but I want to caution everyone that we have some major expenses coming up. If you haven't read the strategic development plan, I encourage you to do so and put a lot of thought into your decision tonight because I'm worried that we will end up with fatigue in years to come, particularly with the uncertainty of the economy right now. I am worried that a vote yes tonight may jeopardize future votes for other key initiatives that we will need for this town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, who's next? Name and address, please.
My name is Christopher Carroll. I live at thirty-three Upper River Road. I have two children in fourth grade currently at Winthrop Elementary School. I'm here tonight to briefly voice my support for Article twelve and the passage of the override. I wanted to emphasize that I am very sympathetic to concerns that people have regarding personal finances. But I think what's important to note here, and has already been said, I just want to emphasize this, is the purpose of the override is stabilization. The purpose of the override is simply to assure that the commitments that the town has already made to education and to the schoolchildren of Ipswich will occur. We are not talking about building, a new building. We are not talking about adding to anything in terms of education and new offerings to students. It's simply to assure that the commitments that have been made by the town will be fulfilled. And I think that this is funding that is entirely in keeping with the character of this great town. I thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, and I encourage everyone to, we can suspend with the lineage. I have so many kids, and I got kids in schools, too. We all know that. Build on what we've heard and give us the reasoning why we should or should not support this.
Thank you. Bob Heckey, twenty-nine New March Street. To add to what I've been already hearing from those in favor of the override is my perspective as a teacher in a nearby community and thinking about what our teachers need in order to educate our students in Ipswich. Two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, the school committee came to us and said, what we're providing for our children will not be enough in the years ahead because we just cannot give them a comparable education to the one siblings have had, generations before have had. And so they come to us again and tell us that we're hitting that point again. And for seven or eight years, we've been able, with the town's support for that initial override in 2015, to move forward with our children's education. And so we're at this point where not only are they coming to us again with that request, but we're coming, hopefully slowly, out of this pandemic experience, which, as a teacher, has forced teachers to support everything from students in crisis to students who have been craving additional education and support and taking those next steps as learners. And so I'm imagining class sizes that it becomes impossible to support those needs and the range of those needs in our classrooms. And I do support the idea that the short-term savings will definitely not warrant the long-term costs that we're going to face when students are not having their needs met in terms of down the line having to pay more money for something that, with this proactive approach, we can support our students. So I thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Whitten, I overlooked you, retiring member of the school committee. Three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name's Chubb Whitten. The state of student mental health raises alarm. This is the April twentieth edition of the local news in an article. The COVID epidemic has exacerbated social and emotional issues for our students and families. Many of our students have experienced isolation and anxiety problems. In addition to lingering COVID issues, our modern world manifests other stresses that our students cope with. This is especially true with constant exposure to social media. Today, the school district employs seventeen adjustment and guidance counselors. This does not include our most excellent nursing staff. Many of these positions were funded by the successful 2015 override and also by COVID-ESR grants. What impresses me most and continues to every day about our school district is that our administrators, our teachers, our teachers, and our staff know every single one of our students. Keeping these counselors as an integral part of this team will ensure that we don't leave a student behind. We have a great school system. Our schools continue to add to our vibrant community. I urge all of you to support the override tonight and at the ballot next Tuesday. Thank you.
Okay, we've had this now forty minutes. Have you got something new to say?
I do. I do.
I don't want to hear anything we've already heard.
You don't want to hear about my kids? They're really cute. No, I actually, I think I have a very different perspective.
I'm sorry?
I think I have a very different perspective, if you'll humor me.
You've got three minutes to give it to us.
Great. My name's Joshua Booth. I'm over at thirty-nine Kimball Ave. I'm actually new to town. We moved here last summer. A big part of that was the Ipswich schools. I'll spare you the sob story. To me, this is coming in new. I'm assessing a problem just from a new perspective. I hear all the words like inflation and extra costs and raise taxes. I like to make it very tangible. If your house is worth five hundred thousand dollars, a fifty-two cent per thousand-dollar tax is two hundred and sixty-four dollars. Have you, as an Ipswich resident, gotten two hundred and sixty-four dollars worth of value from the Ipswich Public Schools? I would argue yes. Me personally, I have. I have a six-year-old daughter in kindergarten. She has struggled going to school in the morning. I'm assuming other parents out there have had similar. We got to meet with an adjustment counselor. It made a huge difference. She's been much better at going to school. That two hundred and sixty-four dollars, well worth that. That's the type of program that I imagine gets cut in the 2014 types of cuts. Number two, we just bought our house here in the past year, which means I've been very familiar with Zillow.com. If you scroll on a house listing on Zillow, if you scroll down, you get a little blue bubble that says a school rating for your town. Terrible way to measure schools, but great way to look at property values. If you look at all the surrounding areas, Hamilton, Wenham, Topsfield, Boxford, eight, nine, ten out of ten. If you look at Ipswich, four, five years ago, we were also looking at houses, that number was five, six. If you look today, that number is seven, eight. And I think that's a testament to the school committee and all of that they've testified about the way that they've used the override so far. So to me, I look at this and I say, two hundred and sixty-four dollars. Is that worth it to me personally? Yes. Even if I don't have kids in school, does changing that little blue bubble on Zillow in today's internet world, does changing that little blue bubble from a five to an eight, is that worth two hundred and sixty-four dollars? So that's my something new.
Thank you, and that was new. I appreciate that. Okay, so we'll go to a vote. This is a simple majority. And just a reminder, it needs to pass by a simple majority tonight, and it has to pass by a simple majority a week from today at the polls, on the ballot, for it to be effective. Okay, so all those in favor, please press the green button. Those opposed, press the red button. And take your time, think about it. We'll leave it open for another thirty seconds. If you need more time, raise your hand. Okay. So, so on thirty seconds? Thank you. Okay, I declare that passes by as two-thirds, three ninety-four to eighty-two. Please, please, come on, folks, come on. Let's remember, let's maintain our decorum here, okay? Article thirteen, rescinding, we just spent one point eight million, now we're taking back nine hundred thousand. Rescinding prior water tank painting article. Still got eight more articles to go. Okay. Tammy Jones of the Select Board moves to rescind nine hundred thousand dollars of the amount, authorized by a vote under. Those of you that feel that you have to leave, please put the clickers in the boxes next to the door on the way out. We had to pay for those. It doesn't come out of the override. Okay, I'm sorry, let me start again. Tammy Jones of the Select Board moves to rescind nine hundred thousand dollars of the amount, authorized by a vote under Article ten at the May fourteen, twenty thirteen annual town meeting, to be borrowed for the purpose of painting the town hill water tank, which amount is no longer needed for the purpose for which it was initially approved. Is there a second? Mr. Burke, second. Okay, Vicki. Vicki Hellman from the Water Department.
Vicki Hellman, Water and Wastewater Director for the town. Back in two thousand thirteen, the annual town meeting passed an article to...
A little bit closer, Vicki.
Sure. I'm short, sorry. Annual Town Meeting in two thousand thirteen passed an article authorizing nine hundred thousand to be borrowed for painting of the town hill water tank. This is the primary water tank for virtually, the main pressure zone for town, and it impacts virtually the entire town. Due to its age, which is nearly sixty years old, and the significance of the tank, an analysis was done to determine options for rehabilitation or replacement. Replacement of the tank was actually found to be the best, most cost-effective long-term solution for the tank. In two thousand twenty-one, annual town meeting authorized four million dollars to replace the tank. Therefore, painting will not occur, and this nine hundred thousand dollars will not be needed. So that is, the purpose of this article is to actually rescind that nine hundred thousand that is no longer needed.
Okay, Mr. Burke, the Finance Committee's endorsement, please.
Joe Burke, Finance Committee. The Finance Committee, by a vote of eight to zero, joins the Select Board in unanimously supporting Article thirteen, which seeks to rescind the prior authorization of nine hundred thousand to repaint the town hill water tank. As Vicki just said, subsequent to that approval back in two thousand thirteen, and due to the age of the structure and some other concerns, an in-depth study was conducted. The Water Department's consultant found that replacement with a new pre-stress concrete storage tank was the most cost-effective and long-term solution. That plan was adopted and funding was authorized at annual town meeting in two thousand twenty-one, thus rendering the painting of the existing tank unnecessary. Since the funds were not needed and were never borrowed, approval of this article simply rescinds that prior authorization by the town. In terms of fiscal impact, this article has no impact on the tax rate since the Water Enterprise Fund is fully self-funded.
Thank you. And the Select Board's position?
As you heard from the FinCom, we unanimously support this. This is one of the cool ones. You know, we don't rarely get to bring this up, which we says, hey, we're not going to borrow some money this time. So we'd like you to support it. Also, because I have the microphone, I'd like to publicly thank our Water Director, Vicki Hellman. The four million dollars that we had estimated would cost to replace the tank has now been offset or will be offset with the three point two eight million dollar grant that she applied from the feds. So thank you very much, Vicki.
Very good. Okay, so anyone care to be heard on this one? So let's go to a vote. This is just rescinding some prior authorizations. All those in favor, press green. Opposed, press red. This is a simple majority. And we'll give you another ten seconds. I declare that passes by a simple majority, two twenty-six to two. Wow, half the people left, down to two hundred and twenty-eight voters. Okay, Article fourteen, wastewater infrastructure upgrade and design work. Tammy Jones of the Select Board moves to appropriate six million dollars to pay the cost of surveying, designing, permitting, and constructing improvements to the aeration system of the wastewater treatment plant, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow six million dollars under Chapter forty-four or any other borrowing authority, and that the Select Board is authorized to make any other, take any other action necessary to carry out this project. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Doherty, and this is a two-thirds vote. Vicki?
So the six million, sorry, the six million dollar bond authorization request is to fund construction of upgrades to our aeration system at the wastewater plant. constructions, construction of upgrades to our aeration system at the wastewater plant. Funds were authorized at Annual Town Meeting in two thousand twenty-one to complete design of these upgrades. The aeration system is a critical component to the biological treatment process at, at the plant. It includes equipment, replacement of equipment that has passed its useful life. Failure of the system would result in incomplete treatment of the wastewater, resulting in violations of federal discharge permits and closure of local beaches and clam flats. The project was identified as critically important in the wastewater asset management plan that was completed in two thousand twenty. Project is expected to be bid this summer with construction to begin in the fall should this article pass. Debt service for the six million dollars has been factored into the water, I'm sorry, the sewer customer rates and does not impact tax bills.
Okay, Mr. Burke, the Finance Committee's position on this?
I'd just like to call out, I made a slight error on page forty-two when I prepared the synopsis for this article. I referred to the water treatment plant. It should be wastewater treatment plant in two spots. Done with the facility on Fowlers Lane. The Finance Committee, by a vote of eight to zero, in conjunction with, like the Select Board, unanimously supports Article fourteen, which will authorize the treasurer to borrow six million dollars to upgrade the sewer infrastructure within the town of Ipswich. The Finance Committee strongly believes that it's important that the town continue to invest in the improvement of our aging infrastructure, of which the aeration system at the wastewater treatment plant is a critical component. The replacement of the aeration blowers and associated planned upgrades are necessary improvements that this funding will provide for, in addition to providing energy efficiencies and improved process control. Due to the location of the wastewater treatment plant and the treatment process utilized there, it operates under a strict federal discharge permit. The current aeration equipment is past its useful life, is no longer manufactured or serviceable. A failure of that equipment will result in raw sewage discharges that would have catastrophic effects on the health of the river, neighboring bathing beaches, public health, and especially on the shellfish and clam beds, clam flats that are so vital to both industry and commerce in the town of Ipswich. In terms of fiscal impact, there is no impact to the tax rate, as all costs will be borne by the rate pass. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the Select Board's position?
The Select Board unanimously supports this. There's actually nothing that I can say that Mr. Burke has not already very articulately stated.
Okay. Does anyone care to be heard on this? Yeah?
This is a question for Vicki.
Vicki, Vicki.
Select person, select person Jones told us that we're getting three point two million dollars back on a grant that we received. It's my understanding that we borrowed four million dollars on that water tower. So my question is, we're taking six million here, we'd already borrowed four million. What's happening to the three point nine million, and why aren't we offsetting it?
Thank you. The Water and Wastewater Departments are actually separate enterprise funds. So the prior article with the tank and the bond, that bond and the grant are part of the Water Enterprise. And once that project is completed, we will return to Town Meeting to discuss the finality of that project and the funding, and whether we will have some rescinding of that four million dollar authorization. This article is for the wastewater department. It is completely separate. This is funded by the wastewater enterprise fund and the wastewater customers.
Okay. Okay, so let's go to a vote. This is a borrowing article, so it requires a two-thirds vote. So all those in favor, press green, and opposed, no. And we'll leave it open for another ten seconds. I declare that passes by a two-thirds vote, two twenty-two to six. Article fifteen, land disposition, one sixty-one Topsfield Road. Carol and Brett of the Planning Board moves to authorize the Select Board to convey a portion of a parcel of land, which parcel is known as one sixty-one Topsfield Road, Lot twelve A on the Assessors Map fifty-two B, in accordance with Chapter thirty-two, the Mass Uniform procurement Act, subject to a covenant requiring that a, that portion of the parcel be used for affordable housing purposes. Second, by Mr. Door, Mr. Schaaf. Sarah, will you just speak to this? Or Willie? I'm sorry. Change of plans. Willie, Mr. Whitmore?
I will. Question, do you want to mention that it's different than what's in the book?
I'm sorry?
It's different than what's in the book.
It is, it is a two-thirds vote.
Is this what's in the book, this motion?
That motion is a two-thirds vote.
No, 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 no. The language in the motion, it's different than what's in the-
It is different in the one article, but it's within the scope-
Would you like to explain it?
The article proposed to do two things, to convert a portion of the parcel to affordable housing and also to convey another portion of the same parcel to the Conservation Commission subject to Article ninety-seven restrictions. That latter section has been stricken from the article, from the motion. So the motion is well within the scope of the article.
Yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to give you the opportunity to explain.
Everybody know that? Yeah.
Okay, and so, so Willie Whitmore with the Select Board. Just to clarify, the Select Board revoted this briefly, and we supported it unanimously. So the Select Board, importantly, we recognize, I guess I should explain what this would do, but, but the town acquired land, I won't go into details on why-
From tax, someone didn't pay their taxes.
Yeah, someone didn't pay their taxes, right? So, so we got some land. And we met with the town planner, and one of the ideas that we had is to, this is land on Topsfield Road. One of the ideas that we had is, we did a survey and found out that the front of the lot, which you see, where there was like a rundown garage or before that we knocked down, in that area, we can put, potentially put in what we're envisioning, be something like a, like a dual townhouse type complex.
If I could interrupt you, this is the lot that we're talking about.
Just when I was going to ask for that. I didn't even know you had it. But anyways, so what we're looking at is, is the ability to put some affordable housing there, right? So, so that's what the Select Board endorsed. We've supported it unanimously, five-zero. I think it's we, not I, we, the Select Board, we really recognize and support the need for affordable housing in this community. This provides us a unique opportunity instead of just providing a little bit of funding to actually build something. So this is definitely different for us. The town wouldn't be building it, but we would be working with a developer who would. This is a really unique opportunity for Ipswich, and we're hoping that we can really take advantage of it. And I think that's, that's basically all that I got.
Okay. So, Mr. Dougherty, the Finance Committee is split on this as well, and you're going to give us the majority position, and Mr. Schaaf is going to give us the minority position.
Yes, Mr. Roberta, thank you. But first, I would like to thank those who are remaining here. You know, we still have important town business to cover, and, you know, I personally find the override exodus inappropriate because you saw the numbers. So I honestly, I want to thank you who are still remaining to complete the town's business for this evening, because if we didn't have a quorum, we would have to go to a different day, and that would just cost the town more money. So, with that being said, thank you. As far as this article.
No one's going to question the quorum.
Well, we got the number right in front of us. That's the scary part.
Get rolling, let's get rolling.
So with this article, this, the Finance Committee actually opposed this article six to two. And the reason why, we just went through a couple of articles that requested you guys to spend money, right? Now we want to try to make a little money here, offset those costs. The parcel that you have here, what the, the proposal is, is to conserve the upper portion and turn the bottom portion to affordable housing. Do we need affordable housing? Yes. Do we, at a very minimum, want to stay above the ten percent affordable housing in town to avoid hostile fortyBs from coming in the future? Absolutely. But does this parcel, if developed for affordable housing, put a large enough dent in the budget, I mean, in the stockpile to make a difference? No. We were told by the planner that if this property was developed, that two, maybe three with a special permit, units could go on this property. That's not a lot, okay? What the Finance Committee would like to see is, take this land, maybe make the back portion conservation, but the front portion sell on the open market. Because the proceeds that the town would receive from being sold on the open market, which in today's inflated cost of real estate will procure hundreds of thousands of dollars, will offset some of the costs that we just approved earlier in the evening. I'll give you an example. We saw a compar, one, one of the comparable sales recently that happened was, I think, forty-four something Pine Swamp Road. It was like forty-four acres. You could only build one house on it, and it sold for like five hundred thousand dollars, just the land. This would be comparable to that, but that was back in two thousand nineteen, not two thousand twenty-two, when prices have gone up. So the way the Finance Committee sees it is, we have possibly a half a million dollar asset that we can reap benefits from. And to put that into perspective, the budget that you just approved on Article three went up by about a half a million dollars. So the sale of this property would offset those costs. Now, to take the affordable housing out of the equation completely isn't necessarily true, because it was also discussed at our warrant hearing on the Finance Committee, that maybe we take those proceeds, and instead of putting it back into the general fund, maybe we put it into the Housing Trust Fund to help future projects, multiple developments that actually make a difference and put a dent in the stockpile that we have in town. So the Finance Committee, six to two, recommends that we oppose this article, that we go back, we see what the market value is for this parcel, we see what we can get as a community. We know that if we sell it on the open market, we're not going to see a Linebrook Road development type. We're not going to see a large, you know, multi-complex dozen or so units. It's only going to be two, maybe three with a special permit, as we were told by our town planner. So, all in all, the Finance Committee recommends to oppose this article, and let's go back to the drawing board and see what we can get for it, and see what we can put those funds to. Thank you.
Okay. Now, let's hear the dissenting opinion from the Finance Committee.
Tom, can I get a clarification?
Hold on, hold on.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Schaaf.
Thank you. Michael Schaaf, Finance Committee. There's no reason to believe, first of all, that that property is worth five hundred K. It was acquired by the town, a tax title from a real estate developer. So one would think that if it was worth that much, that somebody investing in real estate would not let that go. The issue here isn't, geez, is there a windfall for the town, but rather the issue is affordable housing. The housing production plan that was adopted by the Select Board in two thousand twenty-one reported that fifteen hundred and sixteen, one thousand five hundred and sixteen low moderate income households in this community pay more than thirty percent of their income for housing. That's the federal standard, meaning if you're low moderate income, eighty percent of the, the area meeting income, which, or less, is low moderate income, they're paying more than thirty percent of their, of their income for housing expenses. So they're called cost burden. That's forty-two percent of all low moderate income households in this community. Look around, there's probably somebody next, right around you that is so cost burdened. And housing is getting more expensive in this community. As of two thousand twenty-one, the average price, we often hear about the median price, but the average single-family household was cost, excuse me, single-family house cost six, six hundred and nineteen thousand. If you've been watching what the properties on Linebrook Road are going for, they're in the neighborhood of eight fifty and more. Many folks indeed are getting wealthier in this community. You'll, if you look at the, the FinCom report, you can see that our, our per capita income increased fifteen percent between two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen. And if, if we had more fresh data, we'd see even more. What this, what this means is that a lot of folks in this community are getting richer, and you know what happens for the folks who have less money? They're going to get pushed out, and they are getting pushed out. It's just called gentrification or displacement. If you, if you want this town to house the, the workers who serve you at restaurants and cook your food, then you'll support this article. They need affordable housing. If you want the, a young teacher in this community to be able to live in this community, then you'll support this article. He or she needs affordable housing. If, if you want the tradesmen and clambers in this community to be able to live in this community, you'll support this article. They need affordable housing. And finally, Ipswich, would you believe, has a smaller share of younger people, that's the twenty to thirty-four age group people, than in all of Excess County and in the Commonwealth. That means we're old, gray beards. If you want younger folks in this community to be able to live here, if you want your kids to be able to live here, you'll support this project and affordable housing. I urge you to support the, this article. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Let me go back to Mr. Whitmore from the Select Board. He wanted to clarify something.
If I could, just a quick clarification, I'm sorry. Just one thing to explain more clearly, how the motion changed. What was in your book and what the, the Finance Committee and the Select Board originally voted on was for the front of that lot down low and along Topsfield Road to be affordable housing, and for the rest of it to be set aside for open space conservation. So the Finance Committee had concerns about that and whether or not we should be looking into other potential uses for affordable housing, or what else we could do with the lot. So the motion was, was amended or changed prior to being published, so that the only thing we're talking about is just the affordable housing on the lower part. And the idea is-
Their dispute hasn't changed. The change in the motion doesn't change their position on it.
Okay, but, well, just what I'm trying to say is that, the idea here with this motion is that we can talk about the affordable housing in that lower lot right now, and the upper lot, the, the rest of the land that we had talked about setting aside, we can discuss that later, and we can look into it and discuss it at a later town meeting and make a decision at a different time.
All right. Mr. Weatherall, you had a question about the, how this affects the overall budget cycle. Rob, you want to field this, I think?
Scott, sorry, what did you say?
Go ahead, just repeat the question.
Oh, as a one-time member of the original Community Development Plan, the Growth Management Plan, and a one-time member of the Subcommittee that developed the Green Ring idea of the town's development, I've been curious in other decisions the town makes, and this one in particular, and it's particularly pertinent, since the next article is about the CDP, that could someone who is currently serving on the CDP say, in keeping with the earlier resolution, that all decisions such as this should be reconciled with the CDP plan? How does this development of affordability on the outer parcels of town reconcile with that plan and the Green Ring plan, when they both would say that affordability should be focused near the center of town, close to transportation?
Is there someone from the CDP Community Development Plan that can answer that question? Ethan? Did you hear his question?
I, I'm afraid I did not.
How, how does this jibe with the overall Community Development Plan?
Well, as we heard, there's a tremendous need for affordable housing. That's expressed throughout the Community Development Plan. And I understand that the Community Development Plan also talks about encouraging a mix of housing types close to the town center, but we're talking about the potential for a few housing units. I don't think that the CDP intends to exclude any affordable housing development outside of the town center.
Okay. You had a question, sir?
I do, thank you. Bill Graham, forty-five East Street. My question is, I'm a little confused of where exactly this is on Topsfield Road, and could you clarify that?
If you head out of town-
Yeah.
Past Mill Road.
Past Mill Road.
On your left is Warner Street.
Yep.
Right across in that, on the right-hand side of Topsfield Road.
Before the veterinary.
Before-
Before the veterinary on the right.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Way before, yeah. Okay. So now we're going to go to debate, limited to three minutes per person. Carl, did you?
Carl, defer to me.
Do you want to enter the debate? Yeah?
I, I would like to. First of all, my name's Ethan Parsons. I'm the Director of Planning and Development. I've been involved with this property and looking at it for several years. The treasurer took this parcel back in two thousand sixteen, and that taking triggered what we call a Land Disposition Committee process, whereby certain department directors convene and talk about the potential disposition of town-owned parcels that are taken by tax title takings. So we did that. We have a limited budget. Determining buildability and development potential costs money. But based on the resources that we had, the information that we were able to ascertain about this property, and with some budget, we hired a civil engineer to tell us what we were working with, and he delineated some wetlands and measured topography and things like that. And we came to the conclusion that this site really does not have tremendous development potential. There's a buildable portion, we believe, close to Topsfield Road, which is shown here in the white. And we looked at the remainder of the parcel, and it's got a hilltop, right? It's, it's part of a hilltop that forms what I call a little ring around the, the valley in the back, which is where the town just protected the caiman. back, which is where the town just protected the Kaiman Parcel. So we have a hilltop, we have wetlands, we have a perched wetland. We have a civil engineer who told us that the soils are quite poor, but could potentially accommodate up to six bedrooms in the front. Based on all that, we made a recommendation to the Select Board, I did, as well as my colleagues, that this poses a good potential for some affordable housing in the front, and the idea would be to write an RFP and seek a housing developer, or nonprofit preferably, to construct two, up to two, affordable housing units. And then in the back, the question was, well, what do you do with the back part? I understand that the motion changed. I believe it's a pretty significant change.
There's nothing before the meeting about the back.
There's nothing, there was.
Before the meeting about the back. The only motion is, okay, so why don't you finish with that, and then we'll go to the next person.
I think removing the back part is a very significant change, and I understand why that was done, and it's a little bit of a curveball to see that it's been removed, the back part, but I understand that it's not before you tonight, so I'll defer to the next speaker. Thank you.
Okay. Yes. Name and address, please, three minutes.
Wendell Wat, ooh, sorry.
Wendell.
Wendell Wat is...
Those things, they come up on you fast.
Seven Mineral Street. I want to speak as one of the people who is cost burdened, as you call it, working three jobs to make ends meet. I would oppose this simply because I don't believe, for a New York second, that anything even remotely affordable will be built there. We talk a lot about affordable housing, we all say we support it, but the state metrics and the real estate pressures, we are building very, very few units that are actually affordable. I don't know, I mean, I can only speak for myself, but I'm paying over thirty, actually half my salary goes to rent and, you know, utilities and whatnot.
Right, but the question is whether the town should cede this to affordable housing as opposed to sell it on the open market. That's the question.
Sell it off, because I just, yeah, you're not going to build anything affordable there.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Mitchell, you had a question?
Yeah, I had a process question for you.
Sure.
Earlier, Mr. Schaaf was able to speak in opposition to the rest of his board. He was able to speak from that microphone over there, but when Ms. Alexon had a question, you forced her to go over there.
That's because she was a lone negative vote, whereas there was a split. That's why.
I still don't think it's...
Next, fine, run for moderator, Mitchell. Sir, three minutes.
Carl Gardner, Nine Woods Lane. I don't disagree with the Finance Committee's objective here of getting this property back on the tax rolls. What I want this town meeting to realize, though, is that we shouldn't take the approach with a short-term perspective here, a want-and-done sale for an unknown amount of money that the property may or may not be worth. I'd like to have this community act as that, as a community, and take this opportunity, which it is, it's an opportunity, to create affordable housing, even though it's on a small scale, and to put it back on the tax rolls, but for a different purpose, not for a larger state lot, which we've got plenty of in town. We don't need any more of those. What we need is affordable housing, and hopefully, this would be an opportunity to do a modest project in a rural area that's not even visible from the street, and it makes sense. We're going to realize income from this development at some point, just not of the type that the Finance Committee was trying to seek out on a want-and-done, and for an unknown amount of money. So I would just urge this group here to have a long-term horizon, do what's best for the community in this very modest way, and we can do something that we can be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gibbs.
Glenn Gibbs, Fort Camberne Avenue. I just wanted, this is in response to Wendell Waters' comment about being concerned that this really won't be affordable, and I certainly can understand that, because we have, often with 40B projects, we have units that are affordable to folks making eighty percent of the median income, and the rents are eleven hundred dollars. It doesn't seem very affordable to a lot of folks. But what I'd like to point out is that there is a precedent, actually two different projects that the town has done, where the housing that's been developed has been extremely inexpensive, and there are actually similar cases, both of them. One was at 25 Essex Road, where the old White Lion Restaurant was. That's a property that the town took for a tax title, and that property was put out by RFP, and Cape Town Habitat for Humanity was selected. They built three single-family homes there. Those houses sold for seventy thousand dollars. The mortgages on those were interest-free, because that's how Habitat for Humanity works. Years later, on First Street, off Essie Street, another Habitat for Humanity project, Habitat paid the town, or the open, I'm sorry, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund put a hundred thousand dollars toward the project to make both of those units affordable, and they were then sold to two different households that live there now. I know, as a matter of fact, that Cape Town Habitat for Humanity, which is now part of North Shore Housing for Humanity, is one of the first entities that would likely put out, respond to an RFP for this property, and if they were to do that, or another entity like that, we could be looking at single-family or duplex home at a cost dramatically less than what it would cost even for someone to rent a unit in this town, and this would be for ownership. So I think this is an opportunity, as Michael pointed out before, a developer owned this property. They let it go because it had minimal value. This is not something that's going to score hundreds of thousands of dollars. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund or the Housing Partnership support this article. They're not looking for an influx of money to come in, because they realize it's not going to. They support doing this, and I strongly recommend that town meeting vote.
Okay. Thank you very much. Sir, do you have something new to add? We've been at this now for 25 minutes. You're welcome to debate, but I need something new.
John Dunin, 158 Topsfield Road. I'm going to vote in favor.
Okay, thank you, sir. You had a question?
Yeah, Andrew Rist, 14 Long Meadow Drive. Just to confirm, we're just voting on the front parcel. What happens to the back parcel? It gets back to the town, or it's conservation?
The town still owns it.
Town still owns it, because you, someone said that we sell it off, or you, someone said that earlier. It doesn't get sold off?
Doesn't even have to come to town meeting?
Just remains with the town?
The Select Board can sell it.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, so let's go to a vote. Do you have something new, sir?
Yes.
What?
So I just want to point out that if this article does get voted down, it doesn't necessarily mean that it goes, you know, right to Zillow and gets sold. All it means is that we have the opportunity to take that parcel and assess what its land value is, because we don't know if we're going to get half a million, and we don't know if we're going to get 50,000 for it. But I don't see how we, as a community, can make the decision to have it automatically go towards this proposal without knowing those facts first. And that is why the Finance Committee opposed it, was so we can get the data to figure out exactly what its value would be, and then move forward. Maybe we find out it is only worth 50,000, and we come back to you in the fall with this exact same proposal. Thank you.
Yes.
Just have one quick question. Diane Halverson, 3 Palomino Way. Historically, isn't it easier to pass smaller projects than larger projects? So if you're whittling away at the count of affordable housing, this is not something like a big 40B project, so more likely to do...
That's a question that you can take to the Planning Department at one of their citizens' queries. That's a very long question, and no one person has one answer right now.
So there's no yes or no to this? Okay.
That's an interesting thought, though, but thank you. So let's go to a vote on this. As I said, this is a two-thirds vote, because it's a change in use of the property. So all those in favor, please press green, and those opposed, please press red on your handsets, and we'll keep it open for another 10 seconds. I declare passes by a two-thirds vote, 142 to, uh, 160, no, that fails. The motion fails, 142 to 87. Excuse me. Okay, Article 16, accepting the CDC Plan revised existing language. Carolyn Britt of the Planning Board moves to amend the Iswich general bylaws as set forth in Article 16 of the warrant for this town meeting. Ethan? And you do not need the supporting slides?
No.
Okay.
Hello again. My name's Ethan Parsons. I'm the Director of Planning and Development. I've had the privilege of working with a number of people on the update of our 2003 Community Development Plan. That plan, I think, served the town very well. I've been working for the town, by the way, since the beginning of 2015, to give you some context. When I was hired, actually, when I interviewed for the position, I was told by my interview committee that the priority for me and my role was to update the Community Development Plan, and it's taken me more than seven years to come to this point. But it's taken a real, a real lot of effort and time and energy by a number of devoted people. We had a really robust public outreach component to the plan. We broke it up into two phases. If you, some of you may remember, that town meeting actually allocated $75,000 to help us by hiring a consultant to work with us to write the plan, so thank you for that. So we're back. We've written the plan. I think it's a really good plan. The CDP Steering Committee, which was instrumental in shepherding the writing of the plan, endorses it. The Planning Board voted on April 28th to adopt the plan, which is something that's required, actually, by state statute. So what we're asking tonight through this motion is for town meeting to accept the CDP. It's what we call our Community Development Plan. It's got a 15-year horizon, by the way. And we're also asking town meeting to amend language that's currently in the general bylaw, that references the Community Development Plan, and it encourages decision-making boards that are faced with decisions relative to community planning issues, to be somewhat accountable to the Community Development Plan when they're taking actions relative to the plan. So for example, it calls on the Planning Board to consider the Community Development Plan goals and strategies when promoting zoning amendments. It also is being updated to ask that department directors and various town departments make decisions relative to the Community Development Plan. So what that might look like is if the Department of Public Works is implementing some complete streets projects, they have to look at the plan and consider the effects of their decisions relative to the Community Development Plan. So I just want to point out that the Community Development Plan does not mandate that any decision-making bodies take a particular action. It doesn't prescribe that certain buildings or properties, like the one that we just saw, be used for specific things. There's still legal room. The legislative body that we have still has decision-making authority for many, many decisions in town, important ones especially. But it's aspirational, and it, like I said, gives all of us, myself included, some higher accountability to the community, because the Community Development Plan was community-based. And with that, I'd be happy to give it back to Tom.
Okay. Let's hear from the Finance Committee for their endorsement.
So we voted seven, seven oh and one in favor of this. I was a member of the Community Development Plan. I echo what Ethan said. We did a lot of good work. Again, I'm usually a process person. You'll hear that a lot when I talk on the Finance Committee, and this process is worth going through. Almost, you know, as Ethan said, you can't always use the CDP as a prescriptive decision-making document, but it makes you think, and it does hold you accountable to think through what the community said when they, when we had all these outreach sessions, when we went through hours and hours of meetings. So we're in seven oh and one in favor from Finance Committee.
Great, thank you. And the Select Board, how did they come down on this?
Select Board is unanimously in favor of this. This is a culmination of hundreds and hundreds of hours of effort to basically update our Community Development Plan. It is a good guideline and a roadmap for us to follow, and so we support it.
Okay. Does anyone care to be heard? Then we'll go to a vote. Ah, Mr. Weatherall. Take your time, take your time.
Bob Weatherall again. Sorry, I don't mean to be aggravating on this, but I was wondering, have been wondering since the first committee did this, what can members of the current committee or the Planning Department say with regards to the reporting process for any decision that comes out of DPW, planning, housing, et cetera, with regards to any decision a board or volunteer agency would make relative to this plan? And how do we, as citizens, know how that all turned out, and whether it was or was not adhering to the plan?
Can you tell us about that, Ethan?
Yes, we do have more work to do. So we have the plan, we have an implementation plan that has goals and strategies. What we don't have today is an implementation committee. I think that that's critical for some level of oversight, and not, oversight's the wrong word. I'm envisioning that the implementation committee is a more supportive body, so that it helps decision-makers be informed about what the Community Development Plan says, and then help the various decision-makers articulate, you know, their actions relative to the Community Development Plan. That's work that we still need to do, and what does that look like? Maybe having a one-pager that can be distributed to various departments and decision-making bodies, you know, so that when they're faced with a decision, they can go through a very brief checklist, and that can help frame the discussion around policies. That's all that I'm talking about. And if there's an implementation committee, then perhaps some of those members can do periodic check-ins with various, you know, boards and committees and departments. I also think that the budgetary cycle is really, the timing is everything, I think, in terms of getting people's attention, and doing that during the budgetary cycle is critically important. Like when we're considering capital improvement requests, we want to make sure that those things are, to the extent that they relate to the CDP, we want to make sure that that is articulated before town meeting as well. I hope I've answered your question, Bob.
Does that answer your question, Bob? Marginali.
I'm going to vote yes on principle, but I am concerned that, probably no one in the room is red, and so we don't, we trust that.
Yeah, why don't you just, he's concerned that people have not, are not familiar with the Community Development Plan, per se, and wonders what this effect of this really is.
I'm in favor of the committee, I'm in favor of the planning department, but I'm concerned that those of us who volunteer, who are...
Yeah, why don't you come over? If you're going to, if you want to press this, come over and press it, right?
Can I go to the policy?
Whichever one, yeah. But if, I mean, if you want to, if you're going to say something, say it to everybody.
Thanks, Tom.
There you go.
I'm going to vote yes, but I am concerned, have been concerned, that all these good intentions, that decisions such as two affordable units on Topsfield Road, et cetera, when those decisions are made, by town meeting, in town hall, by all of us citizens, and by our professionals in town hall and in the DPW, et cetera, make decisions, there isn't, as Ethan acknowledges, any process in place by which these decisions we all make are reconciled with the plan.
Okay.
And I, I, I trust, Ethan, it will happen. In a way, I'm making noise as a means of saying, let's all of us who volunteer or work for the town and/or work for the town, do our best to reconcile decisions, to think about ideas we have and reconcile them with the plan, so it's coherent, and this effort that we talk about, the hundreds of hours having been put into it, pay off.
Fair enough. Okay, let's go to a vote on this one. All those in favor, this is a simple majority vote. All those in favor, press green, no, press red, and we'll leave it open for another 10 I declare that passes by a simple majority vote, 179 to 13.
Can you order the floor ready?
Yes.
Yeah.
We do. But not necessarily. That's assuming everybody voted. So Lyndale Alexon from... So Lynda Allison from the Select Board is challenging the quorum. Quorum's 200 people. So would you clear that? And let's, everyone press green for yes to say that you are here. You want to, hold on, actually, hold on one second. He's going to clear the board. So we're going to count who's here with the clickers. So question the quorum. Just press green if you're here. Press red if you're not here. No. We are under a quorum. 18, 19, under a quorum. All right, let's do it again. Because some of you may have pressed it before he opened the vote and not counted you. So are you ready to clear?
Mr. Moderator?
There.
Mr. Moderator?
Yep.
Could I recommend that we take a five-minute break and see how many of us can make phone calls to get people back here so that we don't have to do this again tomorrow?
That's a good idea, but let's see if we have to do that because I'm not sure that, is it clear now, Sean?
It's still accepting votes.
It's still accepting votes.
You don't have to reset it. They can just keep on pressing.
I see. All right, everyone press it again, please. It won't count someone twice. Six more. All right, can we, a couple of tellers maybe go into the hallway and see if there are any voters out there?
Yeah, because I mean, some of my, my-
Thanks, Rob.
Maybe out there.
Yeah.
Mr. Moderator, if we get this form, I recommend I go with the voice booth. It's left again.
What? You got five more?
There's a handful of people in the hallway. I just asked them to come in.
All right, all right. There's some people, there's some more, some God-fearing voters out there that we're going to bring in, so. There's got to be four more people out there. Mark, so Mark, have new people that come in. Just press the button. It's still open. Okay, new people come in. All right, two more. One more. All right, we have a quorum. Lynda, Lynda, we got a quorum. Okay. Yeah, no, but there's no calling a quorum within a reasonable time after that. Okay, Article 17. Yeah, Open Space Bond Authorization List. We did vote the CDP and it passed. Andy Brangle of the Open Space Committee moves to add two parcels to the Open Space Parcels List as set forth in Article 17 of the warrant for this town meeting. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Dougherty, thank you. Andy, feel free to come up here. It's on the Open Space Committee.
Hear me? Yes. Hi, Andy Brangle, Seven Cogswell Street. I'm also on the Open Space Committee. So this vote is just to add two properties, one at 39 Mile Lane and one at 3 Candlewood Drive, the old Candlewood Golf Course, to a list called the Open Space Bond List. And it's a, basically a watch list that the properties on which are eligible for bond money should the town want to purchase one of these properties. On the list now are about 100 properties. That's cumulative over 20 years. 50 of them are already protected. Not all with town money, but there are another 50 that are in play. And basically, if the town wants to buy a property or collaborate with another organization, conservation organization or the state to buy a property or buy a conservation restriction on them, the property needs to be on the bond list. So this is only to vote those. And it doesn't mean you're buying the property right now. It will have to come back before Town Meeting, et cetera, so.
Okay, good enough. Mr. Walter?
Mr. Walter?
Mr. Walter. It's late night, sorry.
I have clients that call me that. So that we were 8-0 in favor of this. As Andy said, we're creating a list. These are priorities that they viewed as important. Mile Lane has some water resource, you know, protection issues on it. And so no brainer, we voted 8-0 in favor.
Okay. And the Select Board?
Really, just, I agree with both gentlemen who just spoke, and the Select Board is in favor of this unanimously.
Does anyone care to be heard on this one? So we'll go to a vote. This is a simple majority vote. There's no borrowing, there's no other trigger for two-thirds. So all those in favor, press yes. And another 10 seconds. Okay, I declare that passes by a two-thirds vote. Before we get to Article 18, when we started this evening, we acknowledged the volunteers that have served us well. And we had certificates from the State House. We'd like to also recognize one of our professionals, Tony Marino, Town Manager of four years. And we're grateful for his service. And the Chair of the Select Board would like to say a few words.
Just, well, you've heard me speaking up here a lot. I'm Tammy Jones. I'm the Chair of the Select Board. Prior to that, I was on the Finance Committee. So the last four years, I've had the privilege of working with our present Town Manager, Tony Marino. And I really want to say on behalf of the Select Board, the Town of Ipswich employees and all of the Town of Ipswich, I really want to publicly thank Tony Marino for all that he's given us over these past four years. We've been very lucky to have him as our Town Manager. Tony has guided Ipswich through the darkest days and will leave us a better place than we found us. For those of you who are not aware, it is because of Tony's leadership that Ipswich survived the worst of the pandemic. But we didn't only just survive, we actually thrived. He brought to Ipswich his knowledge, wisdom, vision, and willingness to roll up his sleeves and pitch in wherever is needed. He was here first thing in the morning, and he, every week, and he's here till late at night, obviously. He's made Town Hall a welcoming place for staff and citizens, and we'll miss his open-door policy, smiling face and sense of humor. Tony, we will very much miss you. You're going to be very hard to replace. And although we are extremely sad to see you go, we wish you the best of luck in your next adventure.
He's blushing. Okay. Article 18 is to amend the General Bylaws, Chapter 35, of the Town Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Sarah Player, the Government Study Committee Ad-Hoc Committee, moves to amend the Ipswich General Bylaws as set forth in Article 18 of the warrant for this town meeting. Sarah?
In the fall, Town Meeting voted to create an ad-hoc committee to work on the bylaw for the Government Study Committee. The ad-hoc committee included the two current members of the Government Study Committee, Gary Champion and Craig Saleen, two citizens with previous town government experience, Todd Wilson and Bill Kraft, a FinCom member, Emily Smith, and myself as a Select Board rep. The original Government Study Committee bylaw from the early 1960s had the Select Board create a Government Study Committee but provided no other guidance. The first part of the bylaw considers membership. The current bylaw has the Select Board as the sole appointing authority. We propose expanding the appointing authorities to ensure broader representation from the town. We propose that the Select Board, the FinCom, and the School Committee each appoint one of their own members or a designee of their choice. We suggest that Town Meeting appoint the other two remaining members for a total of five. In the event that Town Meeting cannot appoint members, for example, if no one volunteers, we also have a provision in the bylaw that would allow the town moderator to appoint the first vacancy and the town manager to appoint the second vacancy. This would ensure that the committee would have a full complement of members at all times. The members would serve staggered three-year terms. The second part of the bylaw considers the responsibilities of the committee. The Government Study Committee is a research and recommendation committee that will be researching topics about the town charter and bylaws on behalf of the entire town, the collective. Town Meeting is the ultimate collective. When Town Meeting is struggling with a topic or needs more information, Town Meeting can refer a topic to the Government Study Committee as it has done in the past. An individual citizen can also write a citizen petition that will go to Town Meeting and refer a topic to the committee. The Select Board is elected to represent the citizens. And as the town's executive board, our committee felt that the Select Board would be appropriate to be the other primary referral source for this committee. The Select Board works collaboratively with other town boards, receives input from them, and should be responsible to prioritize the referral topics to this group. We suggest that the Government Study Committee also make annual reports, both to Town Meeting and to the Select Board after researching the topics. The article also provides that the Government Study Committee will perform regular reviews of the town charter and bylaws and make recommendations for possible changes and improvements. Our historic town has an old charter and really old bylaws that need occasional updating. And this committee could perform periodic reviews and make recommendations for improvements on our government structure. The final component of the bylaw states that the quorum for the group will be three members. The ad-hoc committee supports this article as written, 5 to 1, and we encourage your support.
Thank you. Ms. Smith from the Finance Committee?
Sorry. The Finance Committee unanimously supported the amendments to this bylaw. We felt that it brought the needed clarity and structure to the membership requirements. So we recommend that you also support these amendments. Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone care to be heard? So we'll go, Mr. Champion?
Gary Champion, Three Palomino Way, a member of the Town Government Study Committee, and I was on the ad-hoc committee. I just want to make people aware of my thoughts on this. The Town Government Study Committee bylaw proposed by the Select Board and Town Council failed at the October 2021 Town Meeting because it placed the Town Government Study Committee under the control of the Select Board, which it never had. Now, this bylaw is far better with multiple appointing authorities, including Town Meeting, and assures the annual Town Government Study Committee reports to Town Meetings on the committee's activities. However, this bylaw has been described in public meetings as making the Select Board the gatekeeper and the clearinghouse over Town Government Study Committee topics and recommendations to Town Meetings, which in my opinion should not be the Select Board's role. But the Select Board, or rather, the Town Government Study Committee has been shut down for nearly two years for lack of Select Board appointments and needs to get back to work on recommending best practice for responsible government. If there is interference with Town Government Study Committee activities, then an amendment to this bylaw can be proposed at a future Town Meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll go to a vote. This is a simple majority. All those in favor, press green. Opposed, press red. And we'll leave it open for another 10 seconds. I declare that passes by a two-thirds vote, 177 to 14. Article 19. Okay, the article you just passed called for two at-large appointees that we are now going to appoint by vote. And so we'll do them one at a time. We'll do the three-year term first. So anyone can nominate someone, or you can nominate yourself. There's no second required. This is not a motion. It's an election. So Mr. McCarthy from Fellows Road, you going to nominate yourself?
No, no, not tonight.
You can nominate yourself, you know.
Third by Fellows Road. I'm here tonight to nominate Gary Champion for the three-year term.
Okay.
Just based on his five years' experience and his passion for this subject and for the town.
Okay. Any other nominees? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, Mr. Champion, press green. Okay, there we go. This is for the three-year term. All those in favor, Mr. Champion, press green. We'll leave it open for another 10 seconds. Mr. Champion is elected to the three-year term. Now we'll do the two-year term. Okay, any nominees? Does somebody? Anybody? Lots of fun meetings, talk about government process. Does somebody want to nominate Jim McCarthy from Fellows Road? Okay, hearing no nominations. That defaults to, under Article 18, an appointment by the town moderator. And I will appoint someone in due course. I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved, second. All those in favor? Opposed. Thank you very much for staying. Really appreciate it. Please go to the polls next week and vote. And thank you very much. Oh, one more thing. The clickers go in the boxes as you go out, please.